Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the June 9, 2020 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and the health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable channels charter and the Spectrum Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalcada.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. I don't see the number on the screen. Please don't call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kusakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Ajemian. I will lead the flag salute. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic or this land, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Let us join in prayer for our city as we ask for guidance and wisdom for tonight's meeting. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We ask that you look after all those who serve in our military and pray that they return home safe. We ask all of this in your name, amen.
Amen. Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
The Agenda 4, the June 9, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Tuesday, June 2, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Would be three presentation and appointments, 3A agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, June 16, 2020.
Ms. Yasmin Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll go directly to Mr. Rubik Olanyan, who will provide you with the preview items.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For June 16, 2020, we don't have any business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. We do have a special meeting of the city council in the afternoon commencing at 3:00 PM and one item from community development regarding Glendale Business Recovery Strategy. A regular Glendale City Council meeting commencing at 6:00 PM under consent items. We have two reports from Glendale Water &amp; Power regarding, first one regarding Amendment Number 2 to master services agreement with Itron Inc. for hardware and software support and maintenance and professional services, followed by Amendment Number 3 to the software license and support service agreement with Dominion Voltage Inc. for the advanced metering infrastructure-based conservation voltage reduction program. On the adoption of ordinances from GWP regarding Glendale Water &amp; Power Water Revenue Refunding Bonds 2020. Under action items, Glendale Water &amp; Power regarding purchase order agreement with E&amp;M Electric and Machinery for procurement of additional licenses of Wonderware Water SCADA software, followed by Community Services and Parks regarding Duke Magian Park Nature Education Center, followed by Libraries Arts and Culture regarding renewal of contract for integrated library system services, Public Works regarding levy of annual assessment and preparation of the engineer's report for fiscal year 2021 for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District, and finally, from Public Works regarding implementation of automated pedestrian traffic signals within the Glendale downtown area. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Four would be consent items that following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. For a city clerk regarding minutes of special city council meeting of May 19, 2020, 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM in the regular city council meeting of May 19, 2020, 9 o'clock meeting, the special meeting will be updated or revised and brought back at a later date, which would be next week on the 16th.
Thank you. Is there any motion?
Yeah, I want to pull one of the items.
Which one?
The Glendale train station last first mile improvements.
4E is pulled.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Is there a second? Second. So, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Item 4E, Ms. Beers?
Mr. Ajemian will read it.
Mr. Ajemian, you want to read the item?
Public Works Regarding Glendale Train Station First Last Mile Regional Improvements Project, 401 Resolution Adopting the Plans and Specifications of Glendale Train Station First Last Mile Regional Improvements Project, specification number 3793, federal project number ATP SB 1L 5144071, CFDA number 20.205, plan numbers 130613-157318-11049-245, C6916, and directing the city clerks to advertise for bids.
Mr. Yasmin Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we could have Mr. Brotman ask questions or we can have Mr. Imran provide you with a brief report, whatever you would like, Mr. Mayor.
I think briefly, Mr. Imran, if you want to explain what the issue is so that the viewers can follow the questions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This is a project that is the surrounding area near our Glendale Transportation Center. It's an improvement project focused on the area immediately adjacent to that. There are a list of nine separate locations that's listed on the staff report, and the scope of work generally includes pavement rehabilitation, slurry seals, some grind and overlay, repair, construction of curb, gutter, sidewalks, bringing the existing ramps to ADA standards, also installation of some wayfinding signs and installing 550 feet of Class 2 bike lane on Los Feliz and as well as sharrows in some of the surrounding streets, installation of new bus shelters, and some traffic signal improvements and tree planting. And all this is fully funded by our grant fundings that we have obtained, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Brot?
Yeah, I, so I've already spoken to staff about this, so there's no surprise. I support what we're doing here, and I know that in this case, this is already fully baked and ready to go out for an RFP, but I wanted to just take this opportunity to bring up a few things about our guidelines, basically, for bike lanes and for bike infrastructure generally, because I think our current approach is outdated and we really need to look at, you know, what are the most advanced techniques that are now being used to ensure that, you know, people can ride safely and also, you know, we encourage people to start riding more because that's, you know, really what we want. One of the things that I want to show, could you put that up? It's important that we don't leave riders stranded when they get to a point where a bike lane ends, or, not that one, but the first image? Yeah, so you see a problem, no, the last one. Like, this is what we shouldn't do, where you have a bike lane, you're coming up to the end, you're coming up to the intersection there, and you can see that if you're the bike, you've got a conflict now with the car that's trying to turn right. You're either blocking the car, the car honks you, or you feel nervous and you pull off to the side, and then when you continue, if there's no bike lane and you're going straight, you're now at a disadvantage. You're behind the cars because they've already started to go, and now you've got to find your way back in. So that's not really the right way to do it. If you could go to the next one, Arum?
This one?
Yeah, I mean, this is better, where you have, you see, the cars can go and turn right, and the bicycle can then has its dedicated place to go straight. Also, this green surfacing is now becoming more popular, and it's a feature, I think, that Glendale, I think there was a discussion about it maybe a couple of years ago, Glendale didn't want to do it because it was considered experimental, but I think at this point it's not. So, we could look at that, we should look at that. And then, if you could just show the third one, I just want to show you this because this is a bike box, and it's Santa Monica Boulevard, and it's a video of somebody riding this new bike lane down Santa Monica Boulevard, but I'm just going to just show you like just a few seconds of this. So you're riding down here, you see it's green, it's nice, and look at this here, you've got this box, and then you see a green back sharrow as you're coming across, and now there's no bike lane. And what's nice here is that if you're, if the traffic stops, you get, as the bicyclist, you get to sit in that box, there are no cars there, you get to sit in that box and be the first one to get going when the light turns. In some cases, you know, it'd be cool if you could have a light that would just let the bikes go first, but in any case, you're kind of ahead of the pack, so you can get into the lane and, you know, you can safely continue. And these are some of the things that we're seeing in bike infrastructure now, and I would just like to emphasize that these are, these are the kinds of designs that we should try to, try to implement, and I know, you know, I spoke to Mr. Imran, and he explained, you know, hey, we have the guidelines we have, we've got this, we've got our grant, we don't want to lose our grant, we're ready to go out for RFP, so I don't want to monkey with this, but I did want to raise that. And also, another thing we should look at is, you know, what's the minimum allowable width for driving lanes? And let's go to the minimums, actually, narrower widths on driving lanes are known to slow traffic down, because when people have a lot of, a lot more space than they need, they tend to drive faster, just naturally, regardless of what the posted limit says. So as you narrow those lanes, people feel a little bit more constricted in their car, they tend to drive more slowly. Now, whether that'll work in Glendale, I don't know. Some people are pretty, you know, pretty aggressive, but I think in general, that's the psychology of lane widths, and if we can narrow the lanes to the minimum allowable, and then we can have the maximum allowable space for our bike infrastructure, again, we're, we're kind of showing that, you know, we're leveling the playing field between cars and other modes of transportation and encouraging people to use alternatives. And then, I know it's outside of this project here, but we do need to be thinking about how we get people to this first last mile, and how we get people, you know, from the downtown to the train station or from the train station to the downtown. Are we expecting that they're going to be going up Central? Are they going to be going up Brand? Are they going to go up Glendale Avenue? How, you know, and how do we make that connection? Because ultimately, we want to get people from downtown and from elsewhere in Glendale to ride to the train station, and we're doing the first last mile, which is, which is good, we need to do that, right? But we need to then connect that up, so everything is integrated. So I just, I just wanted to take the opportunity to talk about that, but I love the bike lanes, I love the wayfaring signs, we have, you know, if you've been around Brand Park, you know, there's a bike path there, and those signs are really, I think, really good, and shelters, of course, and trees, who can be against those? And when somebody else pays, it's beautiful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Since this came up, Mr. Imran, do you have this one?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Can you show there, or it's not possible?
I don't have a slide for that, unfortunately.
Okay, anyway, since this came up, this is item that I questioned when they were presenting the issue. So, this is on San Fernando Road, Los Feliz Boulevard, and smaller street and Central Avenue, southwest of San Fernando Road. So, the San Fernando Road, that, that area between Los Feliz to Brand are very, very busy street, and I ask you, of course, you explain to me, maybe since this came up, you want to explain to the public what will happen. San Fernando is a street that heavily has been used, and how are you going to manage this, between especially Los Feliz and Brand?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, we will have a phased approach in terms of our street rehab, and we're going to also, we're not going to close the entire street, we're going to close one lane at a time and do the improvement, and then open it back up, and we'll also try to do this at a time that's not, hopefully, as heavily traveled. So, we'll take all that into consideration, and that's part of our bid package that we're putting out, basically, to incorporate those safety precautions, basically.
And how long will it take, those who will work on it, for them to finish the job?
So, we're estimating at this point about five months for the entire project to be done. We're assuming by the time we get all the, we advertise the bids and get them back, we'll come back to the council around September, October timeframe, and we're anticipating completion by February of 2021.
2021, thank you. Thank you for the information. So...
So, I'll move the item if, if we're ready, I'll move the item, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Najarian?
So, this, this is good. This is the first mile, last mile improvements, and they, transit engineers will tell you that that's really the most critical distance, to get from the transit stop to your place of work and from your place of work in. MetroLink, and we really need to focus on the train station, because MetroLink will soon be having 15-minute trains from Glendale nonstop to downtown. Once you get to downtown Union Station, the entire metro system opens up and all the new lines that are coming in. So, even though there's not much traffic on the freeways now, your job might not even be available downtown at this point. We need to start thinking about these sort of things, encouraging people buy bike, and MetroLink does have bike, bike cars, so you can ride your bike to downtown, but we also have our B-line system, which has timed our buses, they're waiting for the MetroLink trains to unload to take them downtown. Some of it is express, I think, we've got that number 11 or whatever that takes you straight down there. So, it's, it's good that we're working on transit. Ultimately, we want to get people out of their cars and into active transportation, whether it's walking, biking, or any other means, so this is a very good step, and bit by bit, we're going to put our system together.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Paula Devine?
Yes, thank, thank you. My, my question earlier the other day was that, here we have another instance where we have bike lanes going nowhere or coming from nowhere, and in other words, it's, you know, what is it, 500, I forget what the distance is?
550.
But I was told that on San Fernando, there are sharrows to lead, which would enable bikers to at least progress down San Fernando, and you said there would be, there are sharrows on some of the other smaller streets in that area? Mr. Imran?
Councilmember Devine, that is correct, and they're going to be on Ceritos and Central and El Bonito, we're going to have sharrows.
Okay. You know, what I'm wondering, just from looking at those photos and videos that Mr. Brotman, Councilmember Brotman showed, I wonder if we could make sharrows like on San Fernando even brighter and maybe green or, you know, a color like was in the video where you could really see them, and maybe that would be more enticing to cyclists and bikers to, to follow those sharrows to the, to San Fernando or to the Los Feliz, to the train station. Just something to think about, you know, just to make them a little more obvious. But otherwise, I think this is great. First mile, last mile is a great idea, great, great planning. I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, and this was either me, so what's next, please?
Next item would be city council and staff comments.
I have lots of calls, I guess, for now, or the community announcement?
Mayor, it looks like they're calling for the community event announcement, three minute portion.
All right. First, I want to go to our city manager before I go to my council members. City Manager Yasmin Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and Mayor Agajanian, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to give you a brief update on our, the city of Glendale's return to work plan in terms of what we look like as an organization. You know, unlike the manner in which we left the campus in a very quick hurry and established distance working, our ability to come back and come back in a manner that is going to be where our facilities and all of our work sites are in good shape and safe for our employees to come back, that piece of it is going to be much more methodical, and our ability to move through each of the modifications that we need to, to make before we have a full return to work in terms of the workforce. And so currently, as you all know, we have had our buildings closed. Although our buildings have been closed, our ability to provide services in a myriad of, of either different ways or services that we provided by way of doing it by telephone and/or email, all of those services have been in place, and we've received quite a bit of feedback in terms of our ability to provide things, sometimes much quicker, by way of, for example, the planning department that, than we were before. We had some glitches in the beginning, and I'm sure we still do currently in terms of phone calls coming in and our ability to return some of those phone calls in a timely manner, but they're few and far between, and we've really tried to focus in on our exceptional customer service. In terms of kind of what this coming back to work looks like for us, we've been probably around 20% or so in terms of employees coming to work, and this is outside of safety services, so about 20% of the workforce has been here outside of safety, depending on their work schedule and the type of work that they do. We will have to have physical distancing measures in place in, in all of our office sites, that's going to be extremely important, before we have employees completely come back to the office. And so, as we look to see what these work schedules look like, we have to make sure that they're staggered appropriately, that the physical distancing is in place appropriately for employees to be safe in, in the workplace. We will have temperature and wellness checks at each department on a daily basis, it'll be a self-certification that will occur with our employees, that will happen on a daily basis, where they will answer a couple of very simple questions, basically, did you feel well when you were at home? You feel well now, you take your, your temperature, you provide that temperature check, and you are on your way. As you know, face coverings is something that we have become accustomed to, and face coverings will be mandatory for all employees who are returning to work, with a few exceptions that, that we will have in place, depending on if they work in their offices by themselves and they are not amongst others, et cetera, they would not have to have the face covering on. Hand washing, of course, is something that is important, we will have signage related to hand washing, respiratory etiquette, and the physical distancing is all over the place in terms of, again, what the staggered shifts look like, continuing to push for teleworking where appropriate, flexible work hours, we will have additional shifts for our employees so that we can isolate instances if we do have an employee who may come down with COVID-19 and our ability to then be able to separate them from other workers and continue to provide the services to our community. Cleaning and disinfection, ventilation, and physical barriers is something that facilities has been practicing and working on, and in certain areas, the physical barriers are being placed at public counters in terms of plexiglass barriers. We continue to go by the CDC guidelines in terms of travel, in terms of employees traveling, of course, if they are going to travel internationally or on a cruise ship, we do have very specific guidelines regarding quarantining for 14 days upon return, that's been in place from the get-go, continues to be in place, we initially had that in place also for travel within the United States, but we've since removed that. We plan to have employees back, 25% at a minimum of our employees back in the workplace as of June 15. I anticipate that we will start seeing counters open based on guidelines that are going to be given by either the state or the county, and depending on, on which counters they are, especially by appointment only, where you are controlling our ability to have those counters open. Within the next two to four weeks, I think you are going to see staggered openings of buildings and facilities and, and public counters happening here in Glendale and, and around us. Some cities have completely kind of shut down certain services, some cities are, you know, utilizing the same model that we are here in Glendale, others are starting to bring back employees as early as this week, and still not opening their public counters.
I'm sorry, when you say they bring back employees, meaning 25% or entire?
Some are doing 25%, some are moving from 25% to the 50%, but they are smaller organizations, and they have, their staffing levels are such that they are able to do that in terms of the physical distancing and the logistics of their offices. So it's very specific to, to each city and the way that their departments are set up. I will say, you know, today within our office, you saw more than 20, 25% of the staff in the office in management services. We do try to stagger our, our staff, but there are certain days you're going to have more staff in the building than other days, as long as the physical distancing is in place. This timeframe is allowing us to move furniture around in certain areas that need to be moved, allowing us to place signage where signage needs to go in terms of coming into a building, exiting a building, especially if the hallways are a little more narrow, et cetera, doing whatever we can as an employer to make sure our employees are safe, and once we open, that our customers are safe as well. And just wanted to give you a brief update on that and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Since we have police chief and fire chief in, in here, maybe I ask them what they have done past few months with their staff and employees and officers? What have they handled it, especially fire?
Because they live together, Mr. Mayor, basically, for, for 24 to 48-hour shifts, and very specifically, we've had to look at both the police and fire departments, but in particular, the fire department, in terms of cleaning, in terms of staff being able to isolate which staff members are working with one another, et cetera, and the chief can, can cover some of those guidelines that we've had in place, and I think it has really served us well thus far.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sylvia Alonsis, your fire chief? Yes, we took, early on, we took very aggressive steps with our response personnel, our firefighters, our ambulance operators, to help keep them healthy through this process. If you were to walk into one of our stations today, you would not recognize some of the things that we've done. We have not allowed them to wear this uniform shirt because of the extras, the badge, the pins, extra things that are carried on them, they're only wearing their T-shirts, they're not allowed to bring their boots or any equipment that they respond to into the fire station, it's all kept in the apparatus bay, and they're wearing tennis shoes inside the fire station to limit that exposure within the station. We did have a total of 24 staff members from the professional staff and our fire prevention staff that have been telecommuting, and we are working on a phased approach to bring them back to work. We've also, as Ms. Beers mentioned, we've added additional cleaning to all of our facilities, we've, the areas that are, well, first of all, we closed our fire stations to anybody, to the public, only emergencies, so we were not allowing visitors to come to the station and bring those potential... So we were not allowing visitors to come to the station and bring those potential infections within the facility. While on response, we did a whole slew of things. Our, anytime there's a suspected potential COVID case, our firefighters and ambulance operators are wearing gowns. They always have worn gloves. They wore masks, goggles, and been completely encapsulated. And then they're coming back to the fire station and disinfecting prior to go into the next call. So we've taken a lot of steps to date, and I'll knock on some wood. We have only had one member of our fire department staff who has tested positive, and we continue to be, he's back to work and doing well, has been for a while, and we continue to do well in the disinfection portion.
What I understand, so firefighters, they were not staying in the fire stations?
Oh, yes.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the firefighters have not missed a day. They have been on the same schedule from the start. We have just taken extra precautions while they've been on duty. But we had to be here. There was no way that our, that our response personnel, our dispatchers have been there 24/7, haven't taken a single day off. We're a 24/7 operation. There's no way to allow that work to happen any other way than
But they have beds very close to each other, so they would stay in bed? Because they are here like for 48 hours, right?
They're here for 48 hours. That's correct.
So then?
The majority of the beds are isolated to where they're not sleeping next to each other. They're either divided by a separation wall or individual bedrooms.
Okay. All right, thank you. About fires, police chief, if he wants to say a few words that how they handled it so far?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Carl Pulvatos, police chief. Similar to the fire department, we took some different things, but our operation is obviously very different. 24/7, we still have to have contact with the public. We changed some of our tactics. Some reports we will take by telephone, especially if somebody was suspected of being COVID-19 positive. We changed our dispatch protocol to ask for symptomology on all of our calls just to make sure that our officers have an opportunity to use PPE if they had to respond to the, to the call. All of our officers issued 95 masks, gowns, goggles, all in the cars. Supervisors have extras. We sort of quasi-isolated the building, so we've tried to minimize contact between work groups. So detectives work on a particular floor, patrol works on a particular floor, specialized units. So we've tried to minimize that, use as much social distancing as possible. But we continue our 24/7 operations. We have had some suspected contacts with members of the public in which case we end up, we sort of, I think the fancy term is freeze proximities, but we ask the officer to remain where they are. We have a group that actually works their way through the contact, how long it was, how risky it was, and then we make a determination whether they're on or off work. If they're off work, we end up sending them home for a quarantine period. We can arrange testing through several sites and there are several options that we have if that's, if that's necessary. And we've done that a couple of times, and we do have a couple of positive cases.
Thank you very much. Thank you for information.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add one more thing. Honestly, we often thank many of our departments, but the department that truly helped us become operational remotely, and they did it extremely quickly, like I've never seen in the public sector at least, is ISD, Information Services Department, helped us with laptops and phones and our ability to do our meetings by way of WebEx and their ability to get us up and running quickly, to provide very important services to our community and not completely stop. Something slowed down most definitely. Information Services Department, you know, my hat's off to them, led by Jason Bradford. Yeoman's job, we couldn't have done it without his leadership and his team's hard work. I know they haven't taken a day off, at least a core group of them, in over three months. He for sure has not. Just wanted to thank him and his team. They've done a really good job.
Okay, thank you. Now, I would like to go to my city council member, Devine, for any comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have two items tonight. First, it's with a heavy heart that I would like to request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory and in honor of Bob Getz. Bob was an 82-year-old resident of Glendale who passed away at his home on June 8th after a long illness. He moved to Glendale in 1984. He was active in Glendale Civic Affairs. He was on the Board of Directors of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association and on the Board of Directors of the YMCA, a member of Glendale Beautiful, the Southern California Association of Governments. He was a member of the Glendale Association of Realtors. He and his wife Marion worked together. He was a lobbyist for oil companies, and interestingly, in the 50s and early 60s, he was in military intelligence with the army. He is survived by his wife Marion. They were married for 55 years. He has one son, Mark, and a grandson, Jacob. He will be missed for his friendliness, his concern for others, and his integrity. And so I hope that we will adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory.
Yes, we do.
All right. And second, you know, like thousands of others
Before, before you go any further, can I comment, brief comment?
Oh, of course, of course.
I didn't know that Mr. Getz has passed away. He was a very kind person, Mr. Bob Getz. Strangely, every time he would see me, would say, "My name is Bob Getz." And I would say, "I know you," because I used to live in Northwest, and he was, his house was not far from my house. And every time I say, "I know your name," but every time he would come and introduce himself to make sure that you don't have to go through the trouble to remember his name, because we would see each other maybe once or twice a year. But he was so kind even in that respect to introduce himself every single time. I feel so bad that we lost him. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. He will be missed by friends and family. My second item is concerning the events of this weekend. I, like thousands or more, attended the Black Lives Matter vigil on Sunday. Needless to say, it was peaceful. It was inspiring. It was energetic. It was impressive. It was motivational. The crowd was diverse, very diverse, made up of all ages, young kids with signs, which I felt was very, very important, because I look at this as a real educational moment for parents and their, and their kids. And so, and I was inspired by all the speakers. They were articulate. They were so passionate. You could not help but be swept up by their emotion and by their message. One of them mentioned, and I really thought this was an important phrase, and he said, "This is a long game, and this vigil is like a kickoff party for change." And I am taking that to heart, because I think what we do next is what matters. I think the vision, the visual of George Floyd under that knee will forever be burned into our psyche. So I think it's time for council to get started. I heard words that this vigil like reform and transparency and accountability, defunding, justice, peace, and love. So I think as a council and as a city, I think we have to begin taking steps towards the goal of reform and social justice and racial justice in our city. We have come, we've come far from being the sundown city, the sundown days, but we have further to go. So with that being said, I would like to ask for a second from one of my colleagues to ask staff to do two things at this point. Number one is to agendize for either next meeting or following meeting a council discussion on what our next steps will be to address the issues and the concerns of the community and our residents regarding, but not limited to, defunding the police department, because I'm not sure what they mean or what they want, and of course, the eight policing reforms. We need a pathway to reform, a reform discussion. I also would like staff to prepare a report for council which provides us with the background, explanations, and practices adopted by the federal, the state, and local jurisdictions, and recommendations, including the possibility, and I strongly urge this one, a citizens task force or a citizens committee made up of community leaders, leaders from the Black Lives Matter, from the LGBTQ community, from all of our leadership in Glendale, because we have some wonderful, caring individuals that I know have been moved by this incident and want to make changes as far as racial equality and justice. So let's start the dialogue. Let's start the change, and let's start the reform. I think Tara Peterson said it today very well in a letter that she wrote, and she said, "Let's move Sunday's energy into actionable change." And I think if I can get a second from my colleagues, we can start that, that change and that dialogue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So I don't necessarily disagree with anything that Councilmember Devine said. I just want to know, how would this differ or why? Is there a way to roll in these recommendations into what we collectively decided last week to bring forth, which is city policies on diversity, equity, and inclusion? I think that these are all good steps and good measures, but if we can have staff incorporate this into that process, I'm certainly for doing that.
And I, and I would add, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you know, in our mind, in terms of Sunday's candlelight vigil and the protests, and all of us, all five council members were there. I either saw you from afar or saw you face-to-face at the vigil at city facilities. The conversation we had with staff on Monday and most recently this morning was regarding the item that was brought forward last week and our ability to be able to form some of these ideas and bring back information to the city council for all of you to provide us then with your thoughts and further direction in terms of what your thoughts are and what you'd like to see. And so we plan to bring a report to council. I don't have a date in front of me, I don't think. We were planning on bringing something later in July, if not beginning of August, because we want to do some research. We want to have something that is well-thought-out and bring information to the city council, and some of the ideas that you brought forward also, Councilmember Devine, would be incorporated in the same request in our minds.
Thank you.
That works.
Yeah, thank you. I definitely agree with that. I think it's just important that the community, that our residents, and that those that watch our council meetings know that we are willing to listen and to move forward on this, on this topic, on this issue, that it is important to us, and of course, we support Black Lives Matter and social justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brotman, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few things. Let me, let me kind of follow up a little bit on what Councilmember Devine was brought up, because I, you know, I agree with all of her points. And, and I had thought of something that I wanted to say in addition to what I said last week. So I, you know, I focused in last week's comments on kind of my, my personal responsibility, because that was the first thing I was thinking is, you know, where do I fit into this? And, you know, I apologize for the years and, as I grew up, when I was really oblivious to the situation facing my black neighbors. I also recognized the truth that my success in career, financial achievements, what have you, that, you know, a lot of it has to do with being white in a world of white privilege. So from that perspective, you know, I don't fully own my own success, and I don't think any of us can say they fully own their own success. We owe a debt to the people whose opportunities have been squashed because of the color of their skin or the conditions of their birth. So, you know, I thought about, well, those are just nice words, and like Councilmember Devine is feeling, and I think we're all feeling the same way, is that we know now, what do we do? What are the steps we're going to take? And one of the things, so I started, you know, I've, I've been talking to friends at the college, at Glendale College and the Guild, and was actually talking to them, and Councilmember Devine mentioned, you know, a, some kind of a commission or a task force or a body, and I think that's a good idea. I think that we should consider some, something broader than a commission. I'm not thinking of, you know, our typical five-member commission, but something broader that will be lasting, that maybe brings together, you know, people, people in the community, of course, but also the college and GUSD involved in this conversation, because I think all three kind of governments in Glendale need to be, need to be part of it. Anyway, one of the things, and I have a slot, I want to put something up here, because the folks at Glendale College have already, they've been scrambling on this, by the way, and they've, they've put together a program called Deconstructing Racism. You can see it here. And it actually starts on Thursday, so they're not wasting any time. And it runs from Wednesday to next Fri-, yeah, to next Friday. And, I'm sorry, from Thursday, the 11th, to Friday, the 19th. It's a series of talks that's based very much on something that was put together, I guess, last year that was going to be, I guess, provided by an outside group. And now the faculty of the college is going to do this themselves. Everybody in the community is welcome. It's now very easy to do these things, because we don't need a room. We don't need, you know, you know, all the setup that we would normally do when we have a physical gathering. So this is all going to be online. It's Zoom. Anybody can attend. I would, I would ask that we consider either being a co-host. You already are?
We're on it, Ms. Brotman. Councilmember Brotman brought this, this idea up to us yesterday after our briefing, and I mentioned that I would contact Dr. Vire from GCC, and Dr. Vire absolutely gave it the thumbs up in terms of the program that was put together quite quickly because of the circumstances at hand and I think the need for, for this in a very timely manner. And so I asked him if he would be okay with us joining and partnering and making sure that we get the word out along with GCC to see if the community would be interested in signing up. And he was elated, and, and so Eliza Papazian from, from my shop already has this and will be pushing it out on, on social media as soon as possible. If it's not already out there, she may have already been on it.
Oh, okay.
And so it's something that, that we plan on, on participating in, and I think it is something that's timely. The one thing that I also wanted to mention in terms of implicit bias training, the city of Glendale, GUSD, and GCC, last year, at the end of last year, came together. So Dr. Vire, Dr. XGN, and myself came together to talk about the importance of implicit bias training within our organizations, and if we wanted to partner in having that type of training within the organization and possibly offering it to the community if the community was interested in having a cascading kind of impact as, as people in, in these offices. And if, if we were to do it, and if we offered it to others, would they be willing to also sign up and participate? We had chosen who the facilitator of these training sessions were going to be amongst the three of us. It was going to be through the City of Los Angeles Relations Coalition, and we were going to launch the program in March of this year. COVID-19 hit, and we weren't able to launch it the way that we had intended to launch it, launch it. And so we are looking to see what the dates can be for us to be able to launch it within the organization initially and then offer it, if we can, to the community. So that's something we've been working on, and I know that had come up last week, that we should partner with GUSD, and we are on our way most definitely and have been since last year.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And, and so, yeah, so on this, anyway, I think we understand there are lots And so, yeah, so on this, anyway, I think we understand, there are lots, there was lots of steps in this process, and we’re all thinking about this, and so this would be kind of a start. And at the end of this process, you know, we could, we could look at maybe some larger town hall, or some way that we kind of frame where we go from here, right? And I think what Councilmember Divine put on the table are some of the things that we need to look at. It’s more than policing, it’s also community relations, and it’s education, and ultimately it’s structural issues, things like housing, things like transportation, education access. All these things go into, you know, jobs, job training, all those things go into the structural conditions that kind of make it hard to make real change. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I had, I wanted to talk about the budget issue, if I could. And, or maybe you can come back to me, because I want Councilmember Najarian to be here when I do that. So could you just circle around and come back to me?
Yeah, okay. Is there any other comments, Mr. Katsakia?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to express my condolences to the Getz family. He was a true gentleman. I had known him for pretty much most of my adult life. He had been involved in so many different organizations. Most recently, I had the opportunity to work with him as a fellow board member of the Glendale YMCA, and we had numerous wonderful conversations about our shared passion for baseball, about Cubs, Dodgers, Red Sox, and I did not know that he had passed, and I’m very saddened by the news. So I want to extend my condolences to the Getz family, and to everyone who knew Mr. Getz, and is being touched by his loss. And then in terms of everything that was said, I think I’ve said my piece about this, and I, I think last week, I also reiterated that any change that we work towards as a community, we need to include our partners in the school and the college, and I’m glad to hear that is being done. That’s very important. Ultimately, if we can teach our children well, and make sure that they grow up to be better adults than we have been, we will have, hopefully, a society in which we won’t see the types of events that have rocked our nation over the course of the last few weeks. But in addition to that, I also want to urge staff to reach out to a number of organizations that have emerged to prominence over the course of the last week, that are in this city, that perhaps felt marginalized, or felt that their voice was not being heard, or were periodically heard, and then felt, you know, that they were ignored, groups such as Black in Glendale, which was instrumental in organizing the vigil, the YWCA, which in recent years has really shown a commitment to pointing out instances of equity and inequity, fighting racism, and drawing, and putting a spotlight in this community on that issue. So I think that, you know, to look to our community-based organizations, to cast a wide net, I think this is something that touches every community, and various people at various times have felt the sting of bigotry, discrimination, and racism, as well as some of our other partners as well, in the media, so that people can see that Glendale is doing this. So, thank you for doing that. I’m saddened to hear that, you know, the pandemic, put your plans on hold, but, you know, move forward, continue to engage the public, and let us know from the council what we can do to help bring about some lasting change. I can’t buy you any more time, Mr. Brotman, so I don’t know where Councilmember Najarian is.
Okay, well, I wanted to clarify a few things about the budget vote that I took, and I wanted Councilmember Najarian to be here for this. So, because it troubled me when you suggested, Councilmember Najarian, that I was kind of somehow dumping responsibility for the budget on the three of you that voted yes, and that somehow by voting no, I was giving up the right to weigh in on spending decisions during the year. And with all due respect, and I do respect you very much, I just think that’s, you know, not the way it’s going to work. Here’s why I had to vote no, and it would have been irresponsible for me to vote in any other way. We had these study sessions, starting in April, and from the very first session, you know, I made it crystal clear that I had concerns with the assumptions, the economic assumptions, underlying our revenue forecasts. I specifically quoted the report of our consultant, HDL, which states a couple of things. I’ll just run through them again. One, they said that they assume, and this is the forecast itself that we’re using, assumes the virus will have run its course by the end of September, and does not consider a return of the virus and potential economic impacts after the current period. I don’t think many epidemiologists think that this is going to be over at the end of September. So that’s number one. They also say, “It’s by no means fait accompli that the U.S. economy is about to fall into a recession of any scale, much less a major one.” I think that’s gone out the window. And they say, “It’s highly likely that the U.S. economy will experience negative growth in the second quarter, but if the shock is short-lived enough, the economy will catch up, possibly with a positive third quarter that makes up for much of the loss in the second.” I just thought, and I still think, that these are way outside of the consensus of economic expectations, and I think it’s going to be a lot worse than this. So, I raised the concerns at every study session, and also privately with staff. I asked staff to look at step freezes and other strategies to reduce expenses, but the budget that was presented last week for final approval was exactly to the dime the budget that was presented in April that I objected to. So, and, you know, last week, I’m told, “Well, if we don’t approve the budget today, somehow the sky is going to fall.” You know, I don’t like being held hostage to time, I don’t like being ignored. There was a time to start the discussion with our bargaining units. Even when we voted last week, there was still almost four weeks before the deadline to submit the budget. I don’t believe it’s the right approach to continue spending as if everything is going to be fine, and then scramble to fix things later. I think the right approach is to be realistic, tighten our belt, in anticipation of revenue shortfalls. I think that we have not done much as an organization to show that we’re willing to share in the sacrifices that others in the community are voting. And I voted no, not because I don’t want a budget, it’s because I wanted a better budget. And I feel like if I had voted yes, I would basically be demonstrating that these study sessions are just for show, that input is meaningless, and that the budget presented initially is a fait accompli, and that’s not, you know, how I intend to operate. So I just wanted to make this statement, because I did go away feeling dissatisfied last week, and not having been able to express myself the way I can now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Mr. Najarian?
Sorry, I wasn’t feeling very well, and I don’t know, my stomach just started turning, just at the beginning of the comments. I had to step out. I was at the event, and I’m very happy that it had such a great turnout, the event on Sunday, the tribute and vigil to George Floyd. A great number of residents from all over, great speakers, a great march as well that came through town. I do want to be politically incorrect. Everyone ready? Let their heads explode. I want to thank the police department for their exceptional service to the city, starting when the civil unrest began in Los Angeles, which was Friday, maybe 10 days ago, maybe 11 days ago. I only saw professional, dedicated, sensitive work by our police, especially during the large march. There were a lot of people there, and the vigil. The officers were sensitive, they were discreet in their presence, they were accommodating, and I want to thank the police chief, and everyone that was a part of that. For some reason, as I was, you know, going through the, my thought process, and listening to other cities describe the problems that they have with their police department, I realized how thankful I am, and how lucky we are to have such a police department. There were some large protests two years ago, also during the Velvet Revolution in Armenia. We had a week of protests with large numbers of people. The police also were exceptionally well-trained and respectful to let people express their First Amendment. I came across an old video on YouTube. I don’t know if you were here yet, Mr. Brotman. I know the rest of us were. I think it was 2014. There was an accusation of racial profiling by Glendale Police Department against a young black gentleman. It was Taraji Henson’s son. And fortunately, there was a dash cam and a, I think it was a officer’s microphone. So, I think it’s still on YouTube, if anyone wants to see what I probably am most proud of, of Glendale Police, in a situation that was characterized as racial profiling, as racism. The true video came out, so it’s a continual effort, I realize that. A moment’s lapse of judgment and control can lead to terrible situations. I encourage, and I think you guys were talking about continuing efforts in sensitivity, and training, and community outreach, I encourage that, and I hope that we realize that the police officers are human. They’re, they have faults, like we all do. It’s a difficult job, I appreciate that, and I’m very glad that we got through this 10 days in Glendale without a single incident. I guess there was a motorcycle that lurched forward, but hey, I mean, look what’s going around the country. I will take Glendale Police any day of the week, and I wouldn’t trade it for any other agency out there. I don’t care. And I’m not going to defund the police, no matter how this discussion goes, never. So, thank you. That’s my comment.
Okay. I would like to go to the next item, please.
Next item would be community event announcements, three-minute portion.
Okay. I have phone calls, I want to go to the phone calls, they are waiting for such a long time. You are on the air with mayor, city council member, and staff. State your name, please. You are on the air.
My name is Deborah Paschak.
Please, go ahead.
And I’m a GUSD parent from La Cucanta. First, I’d like to thank the mayor and the council members who attended and supported the vigil this past Sunday, and I appreciate the statements made so far in support of Black Lives Matter. That said, now, I’d like to know what the city council plans to do to turn this momentum into action. Frankly, given the tone deaf statement that was released by the city manager, I’m skeptical that the city office staff includes adequate representation of all of Glendale’s residents. I’d like to know how this is being addressed to have a more inclusive staff in a non-pernitory way, and soon. Also, I am aware that the police budget is 40% of the general fund. Having heard the statements, I will not defund the police. All I am asking is that, given what we know about early intervention and other social programs, I hope there is a serious reevaluation of this budget, and how it can best be most effectively spent on positive change, on things that will move us forward, rather than on items like riots here for the police. This is not about getting rid of police, this is about replacing our social emotions so that we don’t need them as much. And finally, I know that there are many residents of Glendale, including members of Black in Glendale, the clergy, the YWCA, who can truly provide expertise and advice on figuring out how to move past Glendale’s history, and become an anti-racist town, and push us forward in such a way, and I really hope the council will reach out to those experts and bring them on board as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. You are on the air with mayor and city staff, and city council members. You are on the air, state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Rojas Soto, from Black in Glendale. My Afro-Latinics family and I study in Glendale, play in Glendale, volunteer in Glendale, and shop in Glendale. I thank the council members who supported the racial equity vigil last Sunday. I urge you now to take additional important steps aligned with anti-racist values that only you can take. You see, we live in a racist society. Racism remains a driving force in all of our societies, systems, and institutions. Just like the rest of the country, Glendale is a racist city. It is not possible for any of us individually, me included, or for Glendale as a whole, to evolve out of racist patterns without having done any work whatsoever to actively disinvest from racist beliefs, behaviors, and systems. In your capacity as city leaders, you have the power to change racist systems in Glendale. You have the power to implement anti-racist policies and practices that would have a direct, positive impact on everyone who lives, works, plays, and visits Glendale. Black in Glendale would like to support the city council in creating such anti-racist policies and practices, with the wealth of experiences and expertise our group members have to do so. Centering Black people’s lived experience in this anti-Black society must be at the center of any new policies and practices you hope to implement. Please reach out to Black in Glendale to start a dialogue. We are already supporting the Glendale Unified School District and the Glendale Police Department similarly. Thank you for your time.
You are on the air with city council members, city staff, and mayor. Hello. State your name, please.
Elizabeth Vatanza.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Elizabeth Vatanza. I’m a Glendale Unified Parent, member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, and co-founder of the grassroots group Civic Sundays. I’d like to thank the mayor and council members for their attendance and support of the vigil this past Sunday. Given the huge turnout and support for Black Lives Matter in Glendale, I would like to suggest some ideas for addressing this, and I support Councilmember Brotman’s GCC idea. Creating an office of diversity, equity, and inclusion, as many colleges, schools, and workplaces already do, is another. Implicit bias training is a great first step, but there must be accountability when people make mistakes, as they inevitably will. Some questions I have as a resident, parent, and taxpayer are, why is the police budget 40% of the general fund? Might there be better ways to spend some of that money on social programs, housing, or recreation programs? How much of Glendale’s crime is actually violent crime? Why do our officers need military gear to do their jobs? I would like the council to scrutinize the police department’s response to the eight can’t-wait reforms, which essentially boils down to, we try to do these things, but we reserve the right to not do them at the officer’s discretion. Why are we asking our police officers to be healthcare workers, social workers, and domestic violence experts, instead of hiring people specifically for these jobs? I would like the city’s communications and community relations department to create material that acknowledges our city’s racist history, its status as a sundowntown, the redlining of our neighborhoods, the story of the first black police officers in GPD who filed lawsuits against the department after years of harassment by white officers, as the first of many concrete steps towards being an actively anti-racist city. We cannot move beyond our history if we refuse to acknowledge it. If we can face our past, we can change our future. Finally, I would like to urge council to reach out and work with community members, such as the YWCA, our local clergy, our GUSD administration, and parents, Black in Glendale, and any other residents who are showing up and doing the work of building an actively anti-racist Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. You are on the air with mayor, city council member, and staff. State your name, please.
This is Tara Peterson.
Please, go ahead.
Hello, hello, esteemed council members and mayor, on behalf of YWCA Glendale, I would like to thank those council members that were in attendance at Sunday’s vigil. I hope you found the event to be transformative experience, and an opportunity for us to come together to implement lasting change. Last week, I attended the city council meeting to provide input and concerns as an African-American resident of Glendale. I left the meeting with a renewed sense of hope of what is possible in our community, and a commitment to see through the steps needed to achieve the positive change that our community is seeking and deserves. Today, I’m reaching out to you in my role as CEO of YWCA Glendale. Today, I'm reaching out to you in my role as CEO of YWCA Glendale. We have been called upon by the community to lead this moment and forge a path toward collective healing and reconciliation. I truly appreciated working alongside with Glendale Police Department with the Chief Polidus and Lieutenant Alex Kocorkian. They really helped to ensure the safety of event organizers and all the participants there. It was true community policing in action. But the event was peaceful because of the people, not because of law enforcement, but the people and the community policing tactics that they provided. I also appreciated Chief Polidus's statement, official statement that named George Floyd, and I'm also glad to know that the actions during the arrest of George Floyd were not consistent with the Glendale Police Department's training and expectations and culture. The statement that was released today from the city manager, although well-intended, still felt to acknowledge the severity of the moment or outline concrete steps that you all discussed today, which I'm fully in support of. Cities all over the country, including neighboring cities and small cities, have taken calm yet bold measures to join the calls for these changes. I think it's important that the city of Glendale release a public statement that outlines these changes, a statement that articulates the city's commitment to ensuring the safety of all residents, that recognizes the history of systemic racism and the equities faced by the African-American community nationally and here in Glendale. I hope that that statement will also outline all of the measures that you spoke about today. We are here to do this work with you. We ask that you lean on us, partner with us, and dialogue with us to navigate this moment. We offer our organization's time and expertise as a resource to the cross-coalition work that needs to take place with our city's leadership across government, community, and private sectors. The time is now to move Sunday's energy into actionable change. I also want to remind the city council that in 2017, city council passed unanimously approved a resolution reaffirming the city of Glendale's commitment to a community free of racism, hatred, and bigotry. I ask that you revisit that resolution and make another commitment to that same resolution to our community in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Could you make sure the people state their names? Sometimes when they're calling in, they're not always stating their name, or maybe we can state the name? I don't know.
Each one of them stated their name. I was...
Okay, I know sometimes we've been having a problem with people calling in. We don't typically get, like, you know, when you do a card, you say the name of the person so we know who's speaking? Anyway...
But they all stated their name. You are on the air with mayor, city council members, and staff. Please state your name. I said every time. Hello. You're on the air. Usually, they... We are on the air together, actually. Okay. You are on the air with staff, city council members, and mayor. Hello.
Hello.
Yes. I know you're there.
This is Mike Mohill.
Yes, Mike.
I can speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Please, go ahead. Mr. Mohill, it's your turn. Mr. Mohill, it's your turn. Please go ahead. Mr. Mohill, we are waiting for you. Okay, I guess Mr. Mohill is thinking, is still, you're waiting. You are not, you are on the air. One more time. Mr. Mohill, you are on the air. All right. What's next, please?
Next item would be action items. 8A, Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association on behalf of the General Managers and Resolution Addressing the Term and Conditions of Said MOU. 8A1, Resolution Improving the Adoption, the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association, GMA, General Managers commencing July 1st, 2020 through June 2021.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We'll go directly to Mr. Doyle, our Director of Human Resources. Mr. Doyle.
Yes, Mr. Doyle.
Got it. The item before you is a resolution adopting a one-year memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association. The current MOU between these parties expires on June 30th, 2020. The GMA represents approximately 300 professional, technical, supervisory, and managerial employees throughout this organization. In an ordinary year, we would have begun negotiations, this process several months ago, with the traditional exchange of proposals, the bargaining unit making requests for adjustments in pay benefits, enhancements, the city pushing back with the ultimate goal of coming to a resolution with a ratified MOU. This year, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the general shutdown of the economy and its effects on city revenues, both sides have had to dramatically recalibrate their original plans. On April 24th, 2020, the GMA sent a letter to the city formally requesting an extension to the current MOU for one year through June 30th, 2021. The request seeks no across-the-board adjustments, increases, or enhancements to any wages, hours, or other terms and conditions of employment other than what's already been contractually agreed to in exchange for no concessions. The GMA's desire is to cause minimal harm or economic loss to its members as they continue to work, supervise, and safely manage this organization through this public health crisis and beyond. Even with this proposal being put forth, the vast majority of this bargaining unit will experience a reduction in take-home pay as a result of the increase in medical insurance costs, of which the employees end up paying half of the increase of the insurance premium renewal. Staff recommends the acceptance of the GMA's proposal to extend the existing MOU terms for one year. There are two items that merit some mention as well. There's been some discussion amongst employees and council members about recognizing additional holidays to enable employees to participate in cultural events that are significant to the Glendale community. Most commonly, we hear discussion about the Armenian Genocide Commemoration, which is a Glendale Unified School District holiday, as well as the Cesar Chavez Birthday, which is a state holiday. This MOU proposes one additional day consisting of nine hours, which would be allotted to the employee's floating Holiday Leave Bank for the employee to use that day as they see fit. Additionally, on top of this, this MOU does include some contractually obligated, what we refer to as "me-too" items, that will affect a small number of GWP field supervisors. This is largely a result of the recently adopted MOU between the city and IBW. In that MOU, there was a huge push to retain some key skilled staff, mainly the electrical linemen. They were given a retention pay based on longevity. The employees who supervise these linemen and other rank-and-file employees within IBW are part of the GMA, and we needed to make sure that the pay of the IBW employees does not surpass that of their supervisors. Thus, we extended these extra pays to, again, a small number of GWP field supervisors within the GMA, and that's part of this MOU proposal. With that said, I will say that we believe that the gesture made by the GMA to simply roll over this MOU for another year and not ask for additional pay and benefit items was an appropriate one. Under California labor law, the GMA could have demanded that we formally meet and confer and go through the traditional give-and-take process, but in recognizing the state of the economy and our budget scenarios, they chose this route, which is a far more conciliatory approach. And it's not the first time that they've done this. This proposal was done with substantial consensus within the GMA, as close to 93% of its members approve of this action. This resolution and MOU are contained within the staff report. As said earlier, city staff does recommend that the city council adopt this MOU. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Is there any question? If there isn't, no question, I have a question. Could you go to Exhibit 1, page 124 of 315, and following 125 and 126, please?
50315? Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you explain employee contribution? When this has been adopted? This is new, or it's adopted years back? Is this new?
I'm looking at page 124 and 125, and there's...
126.
126, oh.
Out of this Exhibit 1.
PERS cost sharing, Mr. Mayor?
The one which says City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association Memorandum of Understanding.
Okay. Okay, yes, sir. These are, again, agreed-upon cost-sharing components of this MOU, where the PERS, the system of CALPERS is funded by both...
This is newly agreed or in the past?
Oh, no.
When this has been agreed?
Mr. Mayor, these cost-sharing agreements have been in effect for many years.
Many years?
Yes.
It looks strange, German kind of...
This city...
Here we have 40%, if it's, like, in page 126. 40%? That's what it's called. Employer per contribution rate, and then city pays 38% of it, and employee pays 4%?
Mr. Mayor, what that is, is a chart that shows that if the employer PERS rates reach a certain threshold, the number next to it is the amount that would, the employees would have to pay as it's contractually agreed to. So the much smaller amount is the amount that the employee would pay as a cost-sharing amount, and it gets escalated based on the employer PERS rates that are imposed upon us by CALPERS. So most of our managerial employees pay, it is typically the cap is 4% on top of the employee share, which the employees pay. It's either 7%, 8%, or up to 9%, depending on...
For that, which employee pays 7%? How much employer pays?
Nothing. That's the, there are two, CALPERS is funded through two means, through employee contributions, through the employee share, and then through the employer contributions, which is typically a larger amount. City of Glendale, for probably the past 30 years, has required its employees to pay the entire employee share. And probably, I would say, in the last 15 years, maybe closer to the past 20 years, the City of Glendale has negotiated with its bargaining units to have employees pay a portion of the employer's share as well, which is somewhat rare, even in this day and age. So what you see here is, you know, our employees paying the full employee share, and on top of that, they're paying approximately 4% of the employer's share.
Okay. If there is no questions, anybody wants to move the item?
Well, I do, but on the point that you raised. So, Matt, let's put that in perspective. Many cities, as I go around these, I don't study every city's budget, but when we have our mayors and council members' meetings, you know, we sit around the lunch table and talk about these things, believe it or not. Many cities pay the employees' portion of PERS, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, that is still occurring in some jurisdictions. In the last 10 years or so, we're seeing more organizations having the employees at least pay the employee's share or gradually move in that direction. A lot of times, they require them to pay the employee's share in exchange for a salary increase. It gets offset, but we're very unique in that regard.
So at some point, we're going to have this, I don't know what we call it, some commission or blue-ribbon panel to look at pension issues.
Correct.
But the point is that Glendale not only requires the employees to pay their full share, but also, in our negotiations with them, we have asked them to pick up one and a, in this particular MOU, is it one and a half?
No, it's four percent of the employer's...
Four percent of the employer's part. Now, is it safe to say there are very few cities that have that sort of agreement with their bargaining units?
Councilmember Najarian, yes, that's true.
Okay, so let's, I mean, people listening out there, and I know there's a lot of focus on the budget and pensions, so Glendale's relationship, and this is a bilateral agreement that we have with the employee unions, they are agreeing to this. They're picking up a large part of what the employers otherwise would be contributing.
That's correct.
Furthermore, we have reform in the PERS system. We have the three-highest-year requirement for this, and there's some other, I used to...
Pepper. Well, yes.
I used to rattle this off, you know...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian...
I haven't been to one of those council meetings because, you know, they've all been canceled in the past year. And there's another important, remind me, what's the other important concession we have from our units in the pension system?
We established a second tier back in 2010 and 2011 for those employees at that time.
Which is a lower...
A lower formula, a lesser formula. And then, as you said, the state came in and adopted what was called Peppera, the Public Employees Reform Act, and that dramatically lowered the pension formula for both safety and miscellaneous employees going forward. Anyone hired essentially after January 1st of 2013 would be hired under the so-called Peppera formula.
Well, I think it's, at least in my discussions with other council members from cities across Southern California, there are very few cities, if any, that have the, you know, I don't know what the word would be, the tight fiscal agreements that we have with our bargaining units in terms of their memorandums of understanding.
Relative to CALPERS? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to highlight that, that that's something we do when we bargain. We don't agree to the first offer that's made by the bargaining units, although we're all dealing in good faith in this environment. But we negotiate, and we try to keep as fiscally sound a budget and pension and memorandum of understanding with our bargaining units that we can, to be fair to all sides.
Absolutely.
And to give them kudos for sitting down with us and being part of it in this manner.
Sir.
So I just wanted to sort of frame that issue so we know...
Do you want to move the item?
I'll move the item.
Mayor, before you move the item, there is a caller on line one.
Okay.
Just one caller.
All right. You are on the air with mayor, council members, and staff.
Mayor, I'm a Canadian and a member of the city council. My name is Herbert Molan.
Yes, please, go ahead, Mr. Molan.
Thank you. I would hope that as we proceed with this memorandum of understanding, that the city council members fully understand what you're voting for. I've been watching these events for 20 years in the city of Glendale. I was there present when the GMA was approved as a bargaining unit, something that I could never understand as to why that would be necessary. And I've been there through many of the additional adjustments that have been made to this MOU, for which many council members, when they asked them later, did not really fully understand what they were voting for. What I find troubling is that we do not have a summary concise of the cost of each one of the benefits that are being stipulated throughout this very long document. And I think it behooves the city council to know exactly what each one of these means overall with regard to the additional pay in compensation for the unemployed. The second thing that I would like to see is a study or at least transparency within the... The second thing that I would like to see is a study or at least transparency with regard to what this will do to the long-term pension obligation when these employees begin to retire. Because what you are approving for each one of these benefits that you approved is that they add back to their base pay. Eventually, there goes, that's the base pay for which an additional increase will occur in the future and from which the pension system will be calculated. And we have a $600 million unfunded pension obligation. So it behooves for the city council to have complete and full knowledge of what it is that you are voting for. I think that is the least that we could expect. When I looked at the CAF, the comprehensive annual financial report, pretty much it shows that of the total payment to CALPERS, 10% comes from the employees, the rest comes from the employer and in the city. But I want to offer you a different way of looking at it. The total compensation given to employees and the total amount given to CALPERS combined is the total expenditure that the city pays. In a way, it really doesn't matter if the employees are taking a portion of it to pay for their own pension. Because at the end of the day, it is the combined total of the salaries and benefits plus the pension obligation that the city needs to pay for their retirement that is the outflow of the city. So it really doesn't matter whether the employees are paying 4% or 7% or any fraction of the amount, it is still towards their own benefit. So I hope that the city council members fully understand what you're voting on and that you do have a summary, which I couldn't find in this document, that tells you exactly what the impact, the long-term impact is. And if you don't understand it, my suggestion is that you postpone the vote until you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a few questions.
That's right.
Mr. Doyle and perhaps Mr. Garcia, if we are to come back and ask for more concessions given the current economic situation, how would the approval of this MOU hamper our ability to negotiate with members of the GMA?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilman Kusakian, if you were to not send us back, if you were to give us a direction to negotiate, we would simply take that direction and request consideration of further negotiations with GMA. They, we have what we think is a tentative agreement that's been formally ratified by their membership, but if that isn't sufficient, then, you know, we would accept your direction to continue negotiating.
I guess my question is, if we were to vote yes on this, because there's a line in here that says the GMA is desired to cause minimal harm or economic loss and continue, et cetera, work through this pandemic and beyond, it means to me that if we approve this now, it locks us into a one-year period, they don't have to come to the negotiating table. If we come back in three months and realize that, you know, as some have suggested, our projections are not what they are, and I frankly share some of those concerns, the GMA is not obligated to sit at the bargaining table with us?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kusakian, if we were to ratify this agreement and then come back in three months, six months, and request to the GMA to continue to reopen negotiations, they could in fact say, refuse to do so, but the city does have, you know, other mechanisms through which they can, they can address whatever shortfall or concerns we have relative to the budget. And in that case, it would be layoffs and it's, you know, I hate to use the term, but it's sort of a carrot and a stick. If the city council wants to see other types of concessions, then we can discuss layoffs and then say, you know, if you don't want to see layoffs, let's reopen this contract and make, have further discussions.
But I'm sorry, but the problem with that, because this is what I asked when this was, I was reviewing with you guys. The problem is that then the person who is on lower level, let's say, newcomer or with the smaller, I mean, ranking, I don't know what, how you explain it, whoever is hired last two years or five years, if those who have been here 20 years, they say, we don't negotiate, so then we have to fire those who just joined. Right?
Mr. Mayor, that's typically how the layoff process works. It's based on our civil service rules, they are defined largely by seniority and who's been here the longest.
If I can add to that, based on what Councilmember Kusakian asked and your follow-up question, Mr. Mayor Agajanian, and that is that we currently have four, three other contracts in place with our other bargaining groups. No, it's still four, I think, or is it three? We're in the process of having those discussions with GCA. We're here before you with GMA, but we have contracts with the other three that are in place. If we were to find ourselves in a scenario, as we have discussed through the budget process, where we are at the point where we feel we have to start negotiations and the conversation with our bargaining groups, we would have to ask the three out of the five at this point to come to the table to have those discussions with us. And then we would ask, if this were to be ratified this evening, the same of the GMA. What I have found through the years is that whenever we've asked our bargaining groups to have a conversation, they've come to the table. And that has been our experience, just based on the relationships that we've had in place and their true understanding of the economic and financial constraints of the time, whatever time, you know, frame it is that we may be talking about. And they've come to the table and they've negotiated with us in good faith, even though they were in the midst of a contract. Now, it doesn't mean that if this is approved, they will 100% come to the table, but that's been our experience. And as Mr. Doyle mentioned regarding our ability, if they were not to come to the table, and this could be any association, financially, if we had to go down the path of service-level reductions, in my mind, of course, that would be beyond the furloughs and/or holding step increases and freezing them. It would be service-level reductions and we would see layoffs. And those layoffs, though the bumping is in place and it's based on seniority, would be dependent on the classification at hand. And so depending on the classification and the services that are being provided within the section that you may be cutting, will be dependent upon who gets bumped out of the organization. It could be a classification where it's one individual in that classification, they've not held other positions. It could be a classification where there are 15 people who hold that title and you would go through that bumping process. And it's not a clean process, as you're aware, we've done it in the past. And so it would depend on how that would be rolled out and what that would look like ultimately in terms of our need to be financially sound and our ability to have a balanced budget and continue to provide certain levels of service. So just wanted to.
Okay, one more thing. If we want to furlough one person, let's say, since we signed this, we cannot ask them to, we cannot furlough, let's say, a group of, or everybody?
At this time.
If we sign this?
Correct, no.
I want to see if we can furlough once a month, let's say.
Right, we would have to go to the table and have those discussions with the association with or without this agreement. We would have to go to the table. So whether you had this agreement in place today or you didn't, we would have to go to the table and negotiate furloughs if that was something that we intended to do.
This doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if you don't have the money and they don't agree, then what you do? Where do you bring the money? I don't understand this. I have to go and negotiate and.
Layoffs, because that is a management right. And again, we've typically come to resolution in very difficult times with our bargaining groups.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kusakian, you have more questions? I'm sorry, I guess.
When is the normal timeline for the MOU to be hammered through or for it to be hammered out is 2022? Is that, did I read that correctly, that there's a 2022, something June 2022? And this is a one-year?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kusakian, the group that we're negotiating with right now, it's the general managers within GMA, not the police sworn or the fire sworn, those are.
Those are 2020.
Those, yeah, don't expire till 2022.
And if this was not approved at this time, what would happen in terms of when it can come back to us? There's, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, what is the deadline that we're working with here? Is there a deadline at all?
There is no deadline in place, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. If this wasn't approved, we would come back to city council closed session to get further clarification, direction from the city council in terms of what the recommendation, the direction from the city council is in terms of those negotiating guidelines of the city council. So we would come back in closed session and have those discussions.
Okay, my guess, roll call, please, if ever.
Well, somebody.
No motion or second. Oh, sorry.
No motion. Look, I'm sorry.
I had made the motion and then you went to Mr. Kusakian, so I'm not sure it was seconded.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
No.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item would be Glendale Water and Power, regarding Glendale Water and Power, water revenue refunding bonds 2020, one ordinance authorizing the issuance of water revenue bonds 2020, refunding series in the amount of up to $41 million.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if it pleases you, we will go directly to Mr. Zern, who will take you through the report.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here tonight to request your approval to move forward with the refunding of 2008 water bonds that were issued in a total amount of $50 million and were set aside for a variety of capital improvement programs. At that time, it was a 30-year issue and the interest rate that we had gotten was 3.95%. Today, after discussing this with bond council and our financial advisor, we believe that we can refund the remaining balance of the bond at a rate somewhere in the neighborhood of 2.15%. So the original 30-year issue was to mature in 2038. We won't change that maturity date. So we will look at a 17-year period of the refunding balance. And during that, for that period of time, we expect to save approximately $9.2 million, and that's net of fees, because there are fees involved with the bond council, with the financial advisor, with the rating company and other miscellaneous fees. So net of those fees, we anticipate a savings of $9.2 million over that remaining 17-year period of the 2008 bond. There was a question raised because the charter requires us to bid the services for the refunding, and we also have to put in a maximum, a ceiling, that's also required of the code. In the original documents we sent, the ceiling or the maximum was set at 5.5%. And there had been some questions about that. It's a legal requirement. The 5.5% was a recommendation from our financial advisors. And it is, it is at that rate because in some cases, it's to address fluctuations in the market, but hopefully, we don't see that kind of fluctuation in the next several months. But it is also, covers a very unlikely scenario, but one that still exists, that we could get involved in what's called the premium bond market. And I'm going to see if Victor Shu, who is an attorney for Norton Rose Fulbright, he's on the WebEx, and he's our bond counsel, can briefly explain to you the highlights of what the premium bond issue is and how it's sort of counterintuitive with a high rate, but could potentially save us money. And by keeping the 5.5%, it simply allows that option, although very unlikely, it allows that option to be considered by firms that might be interested. So Victor, if you can.
I'm on the line, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. So a premium bond is a bond that is sold at, above its par value. A par bond would be sold at 100%. A premium bond would be sold at, you know, 104%, 105%, here 10%. The investor is paying more than the par value of the bond. And what that does is it makes the effective interest rate of that bond lower than the stated coupon rate, lower than the stated interest rate. If you had a bond that had a coupon rate of 5% and sold at par, if it sold at 100%, then your interest rate, your effective interest rate would be 5%. But if you sold that bond at a premium, say at 104%, then your effective interest rate would be lower than the 5% apparent coupon. Currently, in this little marketplace, there is a fair amount of demand on the part of investors for 5% coupon paper. And they're willing to pay a premium for this. The effective interest rate is still something at a market rate of 2% or numbers like that. But instead of paying 100% for a 2% bond, they're willing to pay 105%, 106%, 107% for a 5% coupon bond. That's just a quirk of the marketplace. And allowing the city to sell bonds with a high coupon and sell them at a premium enhances your options and leads to greater savings, potentially.
And it's, again, just an option? If it's not an option, the likelihood is probably a lot less than it would be to have a traditional bond refunding. But by having the higher ceiling, it allows for that potential option to come. And of course, these are, it's a bid scenario, so we'll get the bids in, we'll evaluate them. If it's not in our best interest, we will move on. And of course, as I've said before, there's no, we have no intentions of paying any rate higher than what we currently have now, and I don't think you would ever approve that and I would never recommend it to you. So it was simply a way for us to sort of widen the potential number of bidders for our process. However, it's, we are ready to go either way. We have ordinances that have the 5.5% ceiling and we have an ordinance that has a 3.95%, which is our current rate, and set that as the ceiling. Either way the council desires to go, our financial advisor has said is, does not put us in a disadvantaged position. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any, Mr. God?
Just a comment, because I think I might have been the one that raised that point and now hearing the explanation, that makes complete sense. So I have no objection to having the 5.5 if it seems it just gives us additional flexibility.
And we have that ordinance, the city attorney has that, so in the, if there is, if there, when there is a motion, we'll just specify that and.
So however, we are saving 9.2 million.
That's our estimate.
And the expenses for the.
About $258,000, so that's about 2.8% of what we would save.
Okay, I guess we have a phone call, so I go to the call and then we continue. You are on the air with city council members and staff and mayor.
Mayor, this is Mike Moehl. First and before I start, I tried to get in during the oral communication, the three-minute portion, and there was phone, there was phone problems on your end. So I think it's, I think it's, something has to change before this thing continues because it's very rude. I waited over an hour, like everybody else, to get on. Okay, so.
This has to do with this item, Mr. Moehl?
No, I'm going to go on to that right now.
No, but you are going to this item.
I am going to be on the bond, exactly. What I'm going to talk about is the bond.
Okay, go ahead.
We should, we should, we should, we should not extend the bond, we should cancel these bonds, these water bonds. There's no need for them. Why? Because we need the money to transfer that water bond money to the, to the general fund to pay for the pensions and the salaries of our city workforce. Not too long ago, even you included, you passed and sent money into the Everboca Trust Fund. This is money for the city employees for their pensions. So in case the city files for bankruptcy, they're going to have money. And so far, I believe that there's about $38 million. And so far, I believe that there's about $38 million in the Irrevocable Trust Fund. Now, that money should not be in the trust fund. That money should be in, let's see, City Services, your favorite mayor, Najarian, Mayor Agajanian, Affordable Housing. Imagine if we had $38 million for affordable housing. Or perhaps senior programs, or kids programs, or fix our roads. This Irrevocable Trust Fund, it was, it was not necessary. And, and this bond is also unnecessary. Because if you find it, because if the city council didn't take money out of the general fund to Irrevocable Trust Fund, you wouldn't need to pass bonds, bonds and bonds. Because all that is, is borrowing money to pay for our outrageous salaries and pensions of our union workforce. We have a city manager who's earning $411,000 a year. 400, that's more than the governor of California. And she wants that GWP water bond money. She wants you guys to approve it tonight. Councilmembers Brotman and Kusakian, reject it. Make your colleagues go back to the drawing board and say, you know what? No more bonds because bonds is borrowed money and the taxpayers have to pay interest on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's.
I will move the item.
Okay.
Just need a.
5.5%.
At 5, with the 5.5% in there.
So we are introducing the ordinance.
We are talking the saving of 9.2 million?
Yes.
Eventually, the result is that we will save 9.2 million?
Yes, sir, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
It's just an introduction of the ordinance at this time. So it'll be introduced, it'll come back next week for adoption.
I see.
So it'll be introduced with the 5.5% max.
Okay.
Interest rate will come back next.
Okay.
All right, so this will come back next?
Next week.
So we are not voting on it?
That's correct.
Correct.
So we go to the next item?
Yes, sir.
Next item would be Public Works Regarding Contract with T2 Systems. Kenyatta for the operations, maintenance and expansion of digital multi-space parking meters. One resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager of her designation to award a contract in an amount not to exceed 1,282,000.
Ms. Yasmin Beers, city manager, please.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. We'll go directly to Mr. Emrani, Public Works Director.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. We have a short presentation for you on this item. Go to the next slide, please. So the item before you tonight is a contract with T2 Systems, the manufacturer of the city of Glendale's multi-space parking meters for the next five years. In October 2008, T2 was selected through a competitive bid process to provide the city of Glendale with multi-space parking meters for downtown Glendale. This program was successful and was expanded to include the city's parking lots near Glendale Community College. The T2 meters are easy to use, reliable, and cost-effective. We have a future expansion in Montrose Shopping Park of an additional 25 of these meters. And we currently have a total of 71 in the downtown area. So one of the key features of this product is its flexibility and has different modes. We have pay by plate, we have pay by phone, an app-enabled, real-time collection and payment verification. And basically, they're remotely, they can be configured remotely. And they are also cloud-based reporting package, which is very comprehensive, comprehensive and provides the city with several tools to make the parking system as efficient as possible. There's also real-time credit card processing, collection and payment verification. And integration with many of our third-party companies, such as automated license plate readers, and makes these very easy to use and effective. So in terms of the cost proposal, it includes all the features that I mentioned and additional features. And this will be a five-year contract for 1,282,000. This does include $960,000 in cost savings versus their standard pricing as we've negotiated with them. And the, again, our recommendation is to adopt this resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with T2 Systems. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just will ask one question. Is this machine has limits the person, like for two hours, let's say, limit of two hours? So the person can add money to it to extend it? It will let it to extend it or it won't let it to extend your stay?
Mr. Mayor, it has the capability to be programmed and by text or by phone to extend your time.
So if they say limit of two hours, the person cannot extend it from a distance?
Well, yeah, Mr. Mayor, if it's limited by the, by limited parking space. So for example, if it's only two hours, then it's limited by that. But if it's a, like an area, we have him in Brand Boulevard. And basically, you can, you know, keep adding money to it.
From a distance?
From a distance, yes.
This is a computer should be able, if you say two-hour limit, should be two-hour limit.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there a question? Is there a motion?
No, no question. But if I could just say something about this because I think these are great. We spoke about these. And one of the things I think this allows us to do, and correct me, Mr. Emrani, if I'm wrong, but allows us to kind of introduce more demand-based pricing because these can all be kind of remotely configured. And, you know, the idea of demand-based pricing, and you probably know this because you, you did a parking, a parking study last year, I think it was, right? For Montrose and downtown. And, you know, the idea is that there's this sweet spot for parking. You always want, you know, somewhere between 70% and 90% occupancy. You don't want more than that, you don't want less than that. Like, that's what you want to target. And, you know, dynamic pricing can allow you to adjust your, your parking rates so that, you know, if, if there's, if there's too much demand, you know, you raise your price and then people will find other places to park because they won't want to pay that. And if you have too little demand, you can lower it. And I know we've put in some new schedules, but this could potentially allow us to be very flexible. And ultimately, you know, I think what some cities are looking at is almost like the, the Uber model, like surge pricing, where you can have a particular situation where it's very crowded. And if you're able to measure the usage, then you can just kind of adjust the pricing on the fly. Isn't that, I think it's possible to do that, right?
Absolutely, that's correct.
And that just makes an economist's heart, you know, pitter-patter because that's, that's what you want. You want to manage supply and demand in parking to always kind of be at that sweet spot of 70% to 90% occupancy. And it's, and it's proven to be good for, I mean, for merchants because people are kind of moving a little bit more in and out. And also, people are not, you know, circulating as much, looking for a parking spot. So it's actually reducing the amount of driving and congestion and greenhouse gas emissions. So I love it for a lot of reasons.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the item.
Second.
Yes, okay, we have the motion.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, Mr. Najarian?
AD, City Attorney, Regarding Hospitality Worker Workplace Protection Ordinance Pertaining to Hospitality Worker Recall, Just Cause Discharge, Worker Retention and Worker Safety Training. One, Introduction of Urgency Ordinance, Adding Chapter 810 to Title 8 of the Glendale Municipal Code Pertaining to Hospitality Workers' Protection as Directed by the City Council.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Van Miden is going to present the report to you. In April, the council gave direction to our office to work with the Community Development Department to put together an ordinance addressing hospitality, hotel worker protections, including the items that Mr. Najarian just read into the record. We'll discuss the, the process as well as the ordinance. Just, you are probably aware, you received a communication from Unite Here with some suggestion, suggested additions and deletions from the ordinance. Assuming you haven't had a chance to really go into those in depth, Ms. Van Miden will cover those in her presentation as well as some additional comments we received on the ordinance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Van Miden. The ordinance is up. I don't know if you can see it.
Ms. Van Miden.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. What you see on your screen is just the quick background. We did receive that ordinance proposal back in March and we brought it in front of you for your consideration and direction in, in April. It included the bullet-pointed provisions there, fair discharge and recall, as was read in by Ms. Najarian. In response to that council direction, we did undertake a significant amount of outreach and this was spearheaded by the Community Development Department. As part of that, a letter was sent out to the hospitality stakeholders. The council wanted to be sure that they were included and were aware of this ordinance. So that outreach was conducted as well to the Chamber of Commerce and the Hospitality Association of Los Angeles. A press release, a flyer, a survey, a website was put up. We conducted a webinar with a question and answer and all along encouraging participation in the survey to get information out about the proposal to ensure those stakeholders are aware of it. So just in summary, the key points of the ordinance that was prepared by staff were the fair discharge, which were part of Unite Here Local 11's proposal, which, and I'll get to this. As I'm aware, you received correspondence from Unite Here Local 11 along with a red line of the ordinance. They are seeking to remove those provisions of fair discharge, which are A through C. What they would like to retain are the preference for qualified employees to be rehired. So the recall provisions is what they would like to have retained. And those are summarized in the bullet point here, describing what constitutes a qualified worker, the rehire based on the similarity between the new and old positions, the offer of employment, a timeframe within which to accept. And then the retention provisions, which we covered before, have to do with there is a change in control that might affect the positions of the existing employees and what sort of notice those employees need to receive as well as, you know, who is eligible to be retained. And then provisions related to the posting of the, of that list and the hiring from the list of, of the existing employees. Additional features of the ordinance pertaining to hospitality worker retention include the types of terms and conditions those employees would be retained under, whether there was a written job offer, that there be a performance evaluation conducted and that that offer of employment be made based on a successful completion of that employee evaluation. Another important component of this ordinance has to do with the public hygiene or the safety training. In the ordinance, the proposal was that this training be conducted by an independent third-party training group hired by the city. There is an option for the city to conduct the hiring as well as hire staff to administer that program and the certification that would be required for it. The trainer would have to have particular experience and, and the, the training itself, there are specifications in the ordinance about what that needs to include. And turning, including the way that it, the training is conducted so that it reaches and communicates effectively with those workers. The direction that we received from council was to include the public safety requirement of it, not the public hygiene component of it. So that's what we put in the proposed ordinance. So that is the training concerning, you know, domestic violence, trafficking, criminal activity and the worker rights related to those items. There were other specific requirements that go along with that, that, that hosts could not, for example, hire short-term rental cleaning companies unless employees were certified. And, and that there are timeframes that were related to these safety training requirements. One of the provisions that was added that we found in the Santa Monica ordinance, in the event that the city council decides to allow hotels to self-certify, conduct their own training, would be, we added the specifications on this panic button or personal safety device that the hotels would be required to provide employees that may be working on their own for their personal safety and protection. So that is new. It is not a provision in our communications with Unite Here Local 11 this morning and yesterday that they have indicated in opposition to including, as it is in other ordinances that they have, with other cities that they have endorsed. Another provision, this too is from Santa Monica, is to give some flexibility for hardship waiver to hotels. The way that this one is structured is from Santa Monica. And as you can see, it would be based on an application with evidence, financial information, establishing that if compliance with this ordinance is required, it could lead that particular hotel to bankruptcy or shutdown. And there are certain specifications for reduction in workforce or a reduction in hours that would be associated with that. That decision would be appealable through our Uniform Appeal Procedure, which is already in our code. This item, the supersession by bona fide collective bargaining agreement, it was part of the original ordinance, no changes there. Again, retaliatory action prohibited, no change to what was previously presented to you. Enforcement, enforcement and remedies, something for the council to consider. There are some cities that have code enforcement aspect and that would allow for an administrative fine. Many cities just include a civil remedy, which would be a third-party remedy. A worker would seek to enforce the provisions of the ordinance. So that would be the private right of enforcement. As you know, you received the letter and the proposal for some changes. Much of the red line that you see isn't that consequential. So it's changed from the definition of hospitality to hotel. So you'll see a lot of redlining related to that. There's a change in the definition of hotel, but it's not a comprehensive change. It just includes, it would, it would apply to hotel restaurants on, on the hotel premises. So that's the only real change there. In that they're seeking to eliminate the just cause discharge provisions. Instead, they need a definition for what constitutes a laid-off worker. So they've included that within the definitions as well as the length of service because a component of this ordinance has to do with seniority with respect to retention and recall. So it's important to describe what that means. As I've said, the, the Unite Here Local 11 is seeking to not have us include the fair discharge provisions. Those are 810, O2O, A through C. But to keep D and E, that's a preferential rehire. Moving on, sorry, there's quite a bit of information here. But there were a few changes in this particular provision and that has to do with the hotel worker retention. The change that they're requesting would require the retained worker to be employed under reasonable terms and conditions. That not being exactly defined and whose definition of reasonable that would be is not entirely clear. The, that offer would be, remain open for 10 days. Consistent with their request on the, for just cause to be eliminated, that was deleted. What was also deleted was a requirement that employees be retained subject to the collective bargaining agreement. And I know that Unite Here Local 11 will be here on the line to answer questions and provide some additional information. I'm not going to speculate as to why they wanted that eliminated or deleted. It may be because that would be subject to negotiation, but they can certainly speak to that issue. And so the retention would be acceptable where the new employer requires fewer employees, specified retention be based on positions in the same classification or in seniority. specified retention be based on positions in the same classification or in seniority. It deletes that employment under the new terms and conditions of the new employer. So again, it's based on reasonable terms and conditions. And we're thinking, although perhaps they can speak to this, that that would be based on negotiation of a new collective bargaining agreement. Additional changes to the ordinance, your direction to us was not to include the public hygiene component of the safety training. They're seeking to put that back in, so that is in the red line that they provided to you. Now, the Hotel Association of Los Angeles also proposed changes. We received them fairly late this afternoon, but we did manage to have an opportunity to include them in this PowerPoint for you. This is the sum and substance of it. Really what it is, is to add a couple of provisions to the enforcement and remedies. It really is to give a chance for hotels to cure before an action is brought. So these provide specifications for notifying the hotel if there's an issue, and to give 15 days for that hotel operator to remedy that situation. That is a request, again, by the Hotel Association of Los Angeles to include. It is in the Los Angeles ordinance, for your information. Oh, if I could just go back for a brief second. So, given the formation of the enforcement and penalties section, or the remedies section, if the council seeks to just have civil enforcement through third-party action or private-party action, staff would recommend deletion of the cumulative remedies section, because the cumulative remedies section would allow for someone challenging the ordinance to also seek a criminal penalty. I think that conflicts with the concept, both of the cure and of the civil enforcement, which most cities, including Los Angeles and Santa Monica, include. So something for the council to think about. So, what I've done in the next couple of slides are tee up some of the questions for the council, based on what the staff put together before we received the red line today, as well as the letter from the Hotel Association of Los Angeles. So the question is, and it has budgetary implications, Phil is here to speak to that in terms of staffing. I want to mention as well that Darlene Sanchez, I believe she is on the line as well. She can speak to outreach in terms, if there are any questions the council has about outreach. So the question is whether or not the council should authorize the hiring of an administrative analyst and a code enforcement officer to implement and enforce the proposed ordinance as it is. And that would be to ensure that the third-party training facilitator is hired, and that the certification process is implemented. And then the code enforcement officer to address any issues related to the effective enforcement of the ordinance, and that would include administrative fines. It's not required, but it's something for the council to consider. So that's question number one. Question number two is whether or not the ordinance should include personal safety devices and the hotel hardship provisions. Those were not in the original ordinance that Unite Here Local 11 proposed, but they are in other city ordinances, such as Santa Monica and in Los Angeles. And so those seem to make common sense within the context of what we're trying to do here. So that's a question for council. Again, mentioned, should the option of assessing administrative fines be included, or should the enforcement simply just be private right of enforcement through civil action? Moving on. So again, I mentioned this, should cumulative remedies, including criminal prosecution, be included in that enforcement option? It seems to be a potential conflict if there's a remedy option with a cure opportunity through notice, and there wasn't a strong push in our conversations from Unite Here Local 11 that there be the option for criminal prosecution, or costs associated with that. Then moving on to the new proposal by Unite Here Local 11, whether or not their changes should be implemented and incorporated. They're only substantive in a couple of areas. The last is that cure provision offered by Hotel Association of Los Angeles, should that be accepted, incorporated into the ordinance? And then, of course, the city council always has the option to accept some, none, or all of the changes that have been proposed. And I wanted to mention as well, this was offered for introduction as an urgency ordinance. In our conversations with Unite Here Local 11 yesterday, they indicated it is not mandatory or necessary that be done on an urgency basis. It can be introduced as a regular ordinance, if that's the council's desire. So, staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
I just asked the first question, which you said, this is an ordinance, let's assume be approved sometime. So if somebody is not following this, they can go to court, right?
That's correct.
So I would rather not see ourselves, the city, to get involved with these issues, and let the court adjudicate this and find the right way. That's my opinion. But however, I go to my colleagues, is there, anybody wants to get involved with this?
I have a question.
Ms. Devine.
I just have a question, Jillian. I, sorry, I tried to interrupt you, but it's fine. Personal security devices, the panic buttons, did you say that Unite Here 11 is not pushing for those?
During our conversation with them, and they will be speaking to it, and perhaps you can get more information from them, but during our conversation, they did not redline it out of the ordinance. So, in our conversation, they said they would redline it to include items of concern, and so we had walked through the ordinance during that conversation, and they weren't opposed to it. It is in Santa Monica's ordinance.
Say again?
It is in Santa Monica's ordinance. Yes.
Thank you. I go to the phone calls before we continue this further. You are on the air with city council and mayor and staff.
Hi, this is Francis Engler.
Yes, please.
I am the California political director with Unite Here Local 11. And I wanted to clear up a few of the questions that have come up. First, I want to say something that people who know me, I work in a lot, I've worked in a lot of cities in the region on these types of ordinances, and so people who know me know that I almost never say this, but the staff that has worked on this has just done a fantastic job, in my opinion, in looking through this stuff and really keeping on top of it, and thoroughly working with the issues and getting input from us and everybody else. And so I want to begin with just a statement of thanks from our union for that, because it is really refreshing to work with some folks who have really tried to do that. I want to start by saying that this is a moment of just epic struggle for our members. Somewhere around 90 or 95% of our members, especially in hotels, are laid off right now, are struggling with questions of how they will pay the rent. We are in just nonstop efforts just to provide food and keep food on the table for folks. And one of the most important questions that people want to know is if they can plan their lives around returning to these jobs. People will find a way to survive, and if they know that they can come back to jobs that they've spent years building their lives around. And these are some of the best and most experienced workers in the industry, and we are proud to stand with them, and we feel like they are some of the proudest and most important parts of Glendale's hospitality industry. I would like to say that the ordinance, as it's proposed to you and as the staff has written it, is fantastic. So we have given some suggestions, but I don't want to confuse things by making it sound like there's some problem with the ordinance. You've written a great ordinance. What you have before you is a very strong effort to help hospitality workers through the crisis, and then stand with them when they get back to work. So while we've submitted some suggestions, which I'm going to explain a few of right now, I want to be clear that it is not because we have any problems with what you've proposed in the ordinance, only suggestions based on our experience in the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, the city of Long Beach, and the city of Santa Monica, where we've all passed versions, in all these cities, we've passed versions of this ordinance recently. And so we've learned a lot through those discussions, and some of those have played out since you first began your path on this. And so we're trying to give Glendale the opportunity to standardize their ordinance, now that we have a little more information from what's passed in these other cities, and be able to standardize it with these other cities. Not because there's any problem with what's here, but only to be fair to you, and to say, what we're really trying to do is create a regional movement to stand by the hospitality workers right now. So on that note, you'll hear from Jeremy Blasey, our general counsel, about a few suggestions that we have on the just cause provisions. We are simply saying that, you know, we want to let Glendale standardize the ordinance in that area. In the city of LA, the city of Long Beach, the county of LA didn't include the particular just cause provisions, so we don't want to be pushing you to have to get out on a limb fighting for something that wasn't done in these other cities. Not because it's a bad idea, we love it, you know, it'd be, we're perfectly happy if you, you know, decide to do it in the end, but we just wanted to be fair to say to you, hey, we didn't get this in these other cities, so we're not necessarily asking you to have to fight for that particular little provision. What is most important is recall and retention. Your training program is fantastic. We had a suggestion to put in some public cleanliness and things like that, given the COVID crisis, that our general council speak to. But your training section is fantastic, and we agree with, we, of course, are huge supporters of panic buttons. We fought for them in all of these other cities, and so we're very, very happy to have you add that to the ordinance. And finally, we'll say that since the industry has made what I think, if I understand it right, and I haven't looked at it in detail, but if what they're suggesting is adding the section that comes from the LA ordinance about the opportunity to cure, you know, errors, if it comes, if it is the language that comes from the LA ordinance, then we are fine with that. We're happy if you want to add that in response to the industry's suggestion. And finally, we're also fine with the provisions that you pulled from Santa Monica about the process for hardship waivers. It does match Santa Monica's process, and if that's something the staff is recommending to add to the ordinance, we're also fine with that. So in general, we very much support the ways the staff has tried to build this ordinance, and we have a few suggestions, and I agree with the staff's analysis, they're mostly just tech things that are not essential, but that, in the one area that we would recommend is in pulling these few provisions that didn't end up in the LA and Long Beach ordinances around just cause.
Thank you.
But I don't want to confuse that as being seen as some kind of objection to the ordinance or anything like that. So I hope we clarify that, and I'll just end by saying, to me, what really is being decided tonight, and I think it's fitting on a day where you approved the construction of, you know, another hotel, which really, when you look at the direction Glendale has been going with this, you're going to have a very significant hospitality industry when we come out of this recovery. And I think Glendale is rightfully taking its place with LA and Long Beach and Santa Monica as a major hospitality center in the region. And in doing that, it means we have to have the most experienced workers, and we have to have the highest standards around public safety and protection against COVID, and protecting our customers.
Thank you very much.
And I, yep, there you go.
Thank you. You are on the air with mayor, city council members, and staff. Hello. State your name, please.
I'm not sure, this is, I'm being called upon, but my name is Jeremy Blasey. I am general counsel for Unite Here Local 11. I just want to confirm you can hear me? Is that correct?
Yes, I can hear.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. I want to just add my appreciation to the work that the staff have done, and that you all have done in taking leadership on this really important issue. We're enormously grateful that the city council is poised to vote on this ordinance. It's going to provide extremely important protections for one of the workforces that has been most hard-hit by the economic impacts of the COVID-19 crisis, and in particular, the right to return to work and the worker retention provisions will, as Francis Engler just said, provide an enormous degree of security for workers that they badly, badly need. I want to spend a few minutes just explaining briefly some of the changes that we suggested, and again, as Francis indicated a moment ago, these are mere suggestions, and as Ms. Van Muyden indicated earlier, they're, for the most part, not substantive. But just to be clear, sort of what they are, they're outlined in a letter that we shared with you earlier today. We got to this as quickly as we could, we wish we could have gotten to you a little bit sooner. But essentially, as you may know, the cities of Los Angeles and Long Beach and the county of Los Angeles have all enacted very similar ordinances on the right of recall and worker retention for hospitality workplaces. Those are, like this one, great ordinances, they were the product of a great deal of input from a variety of stakeholders. And as Francis said, we think there's a lot of value in having a common and clearly defined standard across the entire region of the greater Los Angeles area, that that will help streamline the law, make it easier for workers to understand, and easier for employers to adhere to. And so in that spirit, what we've proposed doing is removing the measures relating to fair discharge, and then replacing some of the language in the right of recall and worker retention sections, all with language that's drawn from the city and county of Los Angeles ordinances. So we're not proposing, including anything that has not already been vetted and enacted by those bodies, the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles. Along with that, there's a couple of definitions, as Ms. Van Muyden indicated earlier, that would need to be added to clarify these items, the hotel laid-off worker length of service. Again, all language drawn directly from the city and county of Los Angeles ordinances. Very briefly, on the issue of fair discharge, because it's come up, I just wanted to say a word about that. We think that this is an issue that is an important one, it's a relative, the way that it was drawn up in the draft that you have before you, the original draft, is, you know, to our minds, totally fine and well put together, but it is a bit novel. And through the work that we did in getting through the city of LA and county of LA and Long Beach ordinances, essentially what happened is a more tailored approach was created to address the issue, that it was, that this measure was seeking to address, which is ensuring that employers don't use the pandemic as sort of an excuse to permanently replace workers, that really should just be on layoff status. And that's dealt with in all of these other ordinances through language creating rebuttable presumption that employees terminated after the crisis began were dismissed for a non-disciplinary reason. So that's essentially what the substantive changes are. You know, as Francis said, we're totally happy with the ordinance as it is. We think these changes would be helpful in making it more consistent with the rest of what the region has done, and we think there's some real benefits to doing it that way, and that's why we suggested those changes. The other provisions that we called, that we noted in the letter that we shared with you earlier today are not really substantive. They're just about eliminating some redundancies that resulted from the inclusion of safety devices, which, as Francis said, we wholeheartedly support, we've fought, we've spent much of the last two years pushing to enact laws requiring those devices, and we are very happy to see that the city is, on its own, taking initiative to include that provision. But one thing that its inclusion did do was create a bit of redundancy in the ordinance by having parallel definitions of hotel employer, hospitality employer, which mean essentially the same thing. So it's just a bit of cleanup that we suggested. And as has been indicated earlier, we also suggested including language that more closely tracks the Santa Monica law on training. Again, language taken directly from that.
Thank you.
That ordinance. So, again, all in the spirit of constructive suggestions, but to a, you know, a terrific piece of work that you all have done and put together, and we're, again, just delighted that you have taken the initiative and leadership on these issues, and very much appreciate all the hard work that the staff has put into outreach and research and developing this, and the council for taking leadership on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You are on the air with mayor, city council, and staff. You are on the air. State your name, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Who is speaking right now Who is speaking right now is a worker who works in the hospitality business. And Mr. Mayor, I didn't appreciate that you said, oh, you're just going to go to the court. We don't get, we don't have to get involved. Is that so important for you or is more the safety of the workers? I want to say this. I, I'm thinking that you're going to approve this ordinance because life is not going to be the same anywhere, not even in your home. We have to change a lot of things, the way that we were living before. This is not a job. This is very serious, and it's going to stay in here for a long time. So the same way that you put attention when city manager was talking about the, the, the changes or all the considerations about bringing back the 25% of the workers, in the same way that you have to be concerned about all the workers, it's all the industry in Glendale, not just your city. We have to do these changes. This ordinance is very important for workers, protection for workers, protection for the people who comes as a guest. And I'm going to, um, let you know my own experience. I was working in downtown L.A., one of the famous hotels, Billmore, Millennium Billmore Hotel, as a room service server. I need the, the panic button. You know why? I was working from four o'clock to midnight or after midnight. I have to deliver the food to the rooms. And what is my surprise? Because marijuana is legal in California. People are so high in the room, they order their food, and they almost forgot that they don't have clothes on. And they opened the door for me to deliver the food, completely naked, the way that they born. So in, and these things is going to escalate. So these panic buttons are so important for the safety. I'm a woman. I have to take in care of my family. And the only thing that I'm asking you is, please put yourself in my shoes and one of your ladies in your family that they work in this kind of business. And we are risking every day when we going in there. Please pay attention. The only thing that I, that I'm asking you now is, again, I want to touch another issue that is going on in Glendale. Me as a citizen for 30 years in Glendale, I see all these changes through the time. We more concerned about to fix problem for others' companies, big projects, but we don't feel, we don't think about the workers, that we're spending more than eight hours every day in those places. We give our life. And when we get to, 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 to certain age, they try to get rid of us. Please. Another issue that I need you to pay attention is to demand the rent cancellation for both commercial and residential tenants. Why? Because now that I was talking to my optometrist, he is not attending because he cannot pay the rent. It's just regular optometry. It's not a huge corporation that they have land craft everywhere in all California.
Can you finish your sentence, please?
Yes. What do you say?
Your time is up. Can you?
Okay. My time is up, but you spend a lot of time with, with the city manager talking about how they're going to come back the employer, the employees to work. Please pay attention in our community, too.
Thank you.
And approve this ordinance. Thank you.
You are on the air with mayor, city council and staff. Please state your name. Hello. Hello.
I can hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you. Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Heather Roseman. I'm executive director for the Hotel Association of Los Angeles. Wanted to weigh in on this evening's discussion, and thank you for the, the council's thoughtful comments and review and outreach to the stakeholders to which this ordinance will affect. Wanted to make sure that we're having a discussion about TOT and how very closely a hotel industry success is tied to that of a city. Local hotels are the engine of the economy, providing hundreds and, and thousands of jobs, millions of dollars through transient occupancy tax. And unfortunately, due to COVID, some hotels may not recover from this global pandemic. So enacting laws without fiscal impact review may open hotels up to frivolous lawsuits and/or punitive damages like an exorbitant fee that may require a hotel to take a, a loan to, to battle a lawsuit. And this is a dangerous position to put our hotels in at this time. Right now, in, in the, the hotel industry, everyone is developing cleaning and safety standards to respond to COVID and the needs of, of the evolving situation that we face. Right now, Southern California hotels are adopting a clean and safe program, which really requires cleaning standards that meet CDC guidelines and State of California requirements for opening and cleanliness standards. So any sort of training and certification could be an extremely significant cost to hotels that are already struggling to survive. I would recommend that you consider a further impact, fiscal impact study of any sort of training and certification at this time before adopting that this evening. I will say that panic buttons are the new industry standard. Hotels are, are in support of any tools and safety procedures that will protect our workforce on the job and make sure that they feel safe and are protected. We do not oppose panic buttons in any way. But I, I do appreciate your efforts to include some of the notice to cure language for the recall and retention. I would request that the council include the training and certification in a separate ordinance. And again, I really appreciate your efforts to, you know, have a thoughtful approach for the industry. We look forward to the day that we can rehire all of our employees back. You know, we spend a lot of time training and, and really hotel family is, is what we call our, our associates. Many people stay in these positions for 25 years. So we are, are looking forward to the day when we can open our doors and have our, our employees return back to work. So again, thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you very much. You are on the air with city council and mayor and staff. State your name, please. State your name, please. You are on the air. Hello. Hello. I know you're there, but you're on the air. You're on the air. Hello.
Hello?
Hi, you are on the air. Please state your name.
Yes, my name is Carolina, and I want to tell that lady who just spoke that she doesn't know that hospitality owners, they receive $3 trillion from the government about this pandemic, so that she need to come out with the truth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You are on the air with mayor, city council members and staff. State your name.
Hello?
State your name, please.
Hi, this is Jonah Brezlow. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay. So I'm, I'm actually here with some workers as well, other hospitality workers. And I'm here on behalf of Unite Here Local 11 and Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. But I would like to ask permission, just because some of these workers would like to speak in Spanish and get translation. We may need some extra time for them, and so I'm just on here to help with that as well as give my own comments. Does that sound all right with you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Well, so again, my name is Jonah Brezlow, and I'm here on behalf of Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. Lane, and I applaud Glendale for taking on numerous complex issues like worker retention, the right to recall, training, and other protections for workers in the hospitality industry, like these security devices, which are critical for, for workers in the industry. And I know personally how hard it can be for, for non-union hospitality workers to come forward and speak about injustices in the workplace. I was a bellman at the Shore Hotel in Santa Monica, and three colleagues and I spoke out about the problems we saw in my hotel there, and the hotel actually fired us. So that experience showed me how precarious hospitality work can be. This pandemic has shown this precariousness with even more intensity, and it is an unprecedented challenge for the hospitality industry and the workers who make it function. Glendale can protect workers from the worst economic impact of this crisis, and I urge the council to follow the lead of Long Beach, Santa Monica, the city of L.A. and L.A. County and pass a strong and clear law to protect Glendale hotel workers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And so we also have Teresa here. Teresa, is that?
Okay. I want to say loudspeaker. Go ahead. Hola. Hola, mi nombre es Teresa. Trabajo en el, in Glendale Hilton como housekeeping. He vivido in Glendale durante 30 años.
Okay. I'll translate that. So this is Teresa, and she works at the Glendale Hilton and she, as a housekeeper, and she's lived in Glendale for 30 years.
Creo firmemente que cada trabajador de la hospitalidad en Glendale merece el derecho.
She feels strongly that every hospitality worker in Glendale deserves the right?
A regresar a su trabajo, el mismo hotel, en el mismo hotel. Cuando la economía se recopere, perdí mi trabajo, me cortaron horas debido a la pandemia.
So she says, you know, every worker deserves the right to return to their job at the same hotel when the economy recovers. She's lost her job. She's lost hours because of this pandemic.
Me he impactado de esta manera. Los trabajadores del hotel necesitamos tu ayuda.
So that's the way it's impacted her, and hotel workers need your help.
Por favor, pase la ley de retiro y de retención.
Please pass the recall and retention law. Thank you. Trini?
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Trini Ramirez. He trabajado en el hotel Hilton Glendale por 22 años y soy residente de esta ciudad desde febrero de 1990.
All right. So Trini has been working in the Glendale Hilton as well, and she's been living in Glendale since 1990.
Todos los trabajadores de hoteles de todo el condado de Los Ángeles ya tienen la protección contra la pérdida permanente de su trabajo.
So hotels all over the county, hotel workers all over L.A. County already have protections against losing their job.
Todo esto son apoyados debido a la crisis económica, a cualquier desastre natural o a un virus como el que estamos viviendo.
So in these protections, they say no matter what kind of crisis it is, whether it's a natural disaster or, or a virus.
Glendale tiene ahora la oportunidad de asegurar que todos los trabajadores de aquí de esta ciudad tengamos las mismas protecciones.
Glendale has the opportunity to ensure that workers here have the same protections.
Ayúdenos a tener los mismos derechos a todos los trabajadores porque los trabajadores de Los Ángeles, de la ciudad de Santa Mónica y de Long Beach han aprobado la ordenanza de retiro y protección. Gracias.
Yes, it's a, these, please help workers have the same rights as the city of L.A., the city of Santa Monica and Long Beach. They've already passed these laws, and please do the same. Thank you. Yeah, Carolina, is that?
Thank you.
Sí.
And so we have one more.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, listen.
Ya.
Yes.
Mi nombre es Carolina. Trabajo en Glendale Hilton por 20 años y como he vivido en Glendale por 23 años. Creo firmemente que cada trabajador de la hospitalidad de Glendale merece el derecho de regresar a su trabajo en el mismo hotel. Con esta economía, perdí mi trabajo, mis horas por la pandemia. Me ha impactado mucho.
All right, so Carolina said, you know, my name is Carolina. I've worked at the Glendale Hilton for 20 years, and I've lived in Glendale for 23 years. And she also believes that every hospitality worker in Glendale deserves the right to return to their job as the economy gets better. And she's lost her job as well, and that's had a serious impact on her.
Por la economía, esto impacta de esta manera a los trabajadores de los hoteles. Quiero que pase la ley de retiro y retención. Retiro y retención.
Sí. Yeah, and she said, you know, please pass this law as well. You know, workers have been impacted by this. And thank you. That, that's all of us here. Thank you for allowing us the time to speak and, and have translation.
No problem. Thank you very much. Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, what we do next.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think now would be the time, if council members have questions, additional questions of staff, to pose those now, and then the council can then deliberate and then give us direction on which of the, of the features that were discussed by Jillian, you want to be included in the ordinance so we can bring it back and introduce it with those changes, and then we'll bring it back next week for adoption. If that's the council's desire.
So we will adopt it at a later time, after you get the...
Well, it's, it's on your agenda tonight for, for introduction.
Right.
And we, we would need for it to be introduced. We would need the direction of the council, what you want to be included in the ordinance. There's the ordinance with the main pieces of it, and then there are a couple of open questions that, as Jillian explained, we would need direction on. Then we would bring that back to you next week for adoption. One of the other pieces of it, obviously, was initially proposed as an urgency ordinance. The council can adopt it as an urgency if it, if it, therefore votes for it, and you want it to be adopted on an urgency basis, meaning it would take effect immediately upon adoption next week, or you can adopt it as a regular ordinance, in which case it would be, it would take effect 30 days thereafter.
Mr. Katsak, you want to start first, or you?
Certainly. In terms of the overall ordinance, again, I think staff has been showered with praise and, and deservedly so. Thank you for your hard work in bringing this back. I, I for one, am not interested in the additional hiring of city staff for the enforcement portion of this. I think that having that, the option of assessing administrative fines included, I would be for that portion of it. But I think that ultimately, the process that was outlined where it would be, and I'm sorry, I'm not an attorney, so I don't remember the exact language that was proposed, but to have it go through...
Private right of action.
Private right of action would be my preference.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brot.
Okay, so I'm just going through this list where it says council directions. So number one, should staff, should city hire new staff? I would say no.
So, just so we're clear, and Jillian correct me if I'm wrong, without the staff, then we're basically, the council would be agreeing to the self-certification process as part of the process.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
We just want to make sure that that's...
Should the ordinance include personal safety device specs? And I would say yes on that. Yeah. The administrative fines, I actually don't know. I don't have a view on that.
Administrative fines, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brotman, there would be a code enforcement aspect to that, and so that is part of the overlay with looking at new staffing in order to go out and, and...
Excuse me.
Issue fine, issue citations that would be part of the administrative fining process. So just...
Excuse me, one, I'm sorry, excuse me. When we say the first one, we left it to the court. Number three goes along with one, isn't it?
That's correct.
But it is an additional code enforcement tool that you have. You're just not, you're not going to have necessarily the staff that's going to be enforcing. So really, the primary tool is still going to be the private of action. It would allow the employees or the, their, or their, you know, their union to, to go to court and represent them. I think the way I understood, the administrative citation or fines is, is an additional tool.
It is an additional tool, but if the council wants to accept the cure provision, part of the administrative process is to encourage voluntary compliance... part of the administrative process is to encourage voluntary compliance before you get to a court proceeding. But if there's this cure process that's been suggested by the Hotel Association of Los Angeles, it, in a way, moots the necessity to have that administrative fining process, which would imply needing to have someone here within city staff on code enforcement, for example. So, the mayor's preference was just to allow for civil enforcement, private right of action, and that's the direction that the council could take.
Yeah, so I support that as well. The question of cumulative remedies, I don't really know enough to take a view on that.
We would recommend, if the council wants to include the cure provision and just allow for the private right of action, then the cumulative remedies provision could be deleted, and that is a recommendation.
Okay. So, the next one, Unite Here Eleven's proposed modifications, I think they all make sense to me. I would include the hygiene training. One thing that they mentioned was some concern that if the notification to hotel workers for, you know, recall or any other action is if it's only by old-fashioned mail, that may not get to people. So, I know they suggested something like adding text and email. Can we have kind of multiple, there's a requirement to go out over multiple channels of communication to make sure people are getting it? I would say that. I'm fine with the cure, the cure provision from the Hotel Association, and I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nigerian.
Okay. I don't think we should have any new staff in this process. I think it should be a private right of action. Safety devices, yes. Hotel hardship provisions, yes. Administrative fines, no, unless we want to prescribe a...
We said that goes along with number one.
Damage.
The court will...
Well, no, but not as an administrative fine. I'm saying it, within the ordinance, set a, set a minimum damage amount, which I think, I think we can do that. Can't you set forth a... Because how are you going to prove damages on that? You know, you should have a, but that's not an administrative fine. That's something that the private cause of action would incorporate. You understand what I'm saying?
It would, yeah.
Something, some sort of modest fine in there. I'm not thinking about anything too huge, but...
Can't remember the details, but the private right of action is that primarily injunctive and declaratory relief with attorney's fees?
That's correct.
So...
So, we'll include attorney's fee? Okay, if we're going to include attorney's fees, that's enough of a, that's enough of a fine. That's enough of a...
Okay. Very good.
So, no criminal prosecution. Let's keep this civil. Unite Here's proposals, fine. The Hotel Association's proposals, I think that, I don't think they're contradictory, are they?
No, it's really, it's a notice provision to cure, to give that, the hotels an opportunity to fix the problem before it leads to litigation.
And that's it.
Okay. Ms. Devine, are you agreeing with what has been offered here, or you have new...
I am, I am in total agreement. You know, I think we should try to stay consistent with the county and with the city. I think they're right in this regional approach, so I would go along with no staff, civil remedies, personal safety devices, absolutely, hotel hardship, yes, that's okay, civil actions, I think that was number three, no, that should be private right of, or civil actions or private right of enforcement. Jillian, I thought that you said that if we do the civil remedies, that would negate the cure provision. No? Am I wrong? I'm sorry, I know you said this three times.
It's quite all right. No, Councilmember Devine, it wouldn't negate the cure provision, it would negate the need for the cumulative remedies provision.
Oh, okay.
Because that's the one that as well had the opportunity for other methods of enforcement to occur, including criminal. So, that was contradictory.
Yes, and I didn't, I'm not for that one anyway, so, okay, so that's a no, and I guess the cure provision is okay with me. Unite Here, I'm okay with all of theirs. I have a question about the public cleanliness. If we put that provision in, is that redundant with the state and what they're asking hotels to do?
That's a question that Councilmember Devine, we've been grappling with. We understand that there are a number of state and local provisions that do impose those types of requirements. However, that training would need to be consistent with those requirements. So, the third-party training would just ensure that those standards are being applied uniformly.
Okay, okay, so then I would be for that, and of course, that would be the hotel employer's responsibility for payment. So, does that take care of all of these? This is very difficult. Is that all of them, Jillian? Yes, on the, I thought, again, I agree with Francis. I think you all did a fantastic job, and I was ready to just say yes to the whole thing. Thank you so much for all that work. Appreciate it.
I think that covers everything, Councilmember Devine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I have a phone call. Can I go and listen to before...
It's up to you. I mean, you already took the speakers and had the deliberation.
Yes. You are on the air with Mayor and City Councilmembers and staff. State your name.
Mayor, I think that's for item 8E, the next item. Yes, it's Allen Mendikin.
Thank you. Okay, I think you have enough...
Well, I just then need some, one of the council members to introduce the ordinance with the changes. I think both Councilman Nigerian and Councilman Brotman went through all the changes that would be included in the ordinance, so if somebody can introduce it with those changes...
I will introduce, I will introduce the ordinance.
All right. Is there...
I'll second it.
Okay. Doesn't need a second, but we will bring it back with those changes that I think were there's consensus on.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Jamian, can we go to item 8F, please?
8F?
Rather than E?
Yes, Mayor. 8F would be city attorney regarding reconsideration of requirement that commercial tenants have less than five locations to be eligible for six-month repayment period under the commercial eviction moratorium. One resolution amending commercial eviction moratorium.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, last week, the council extended the commercial eviction moratorium and put some new parameters on the six-month, the businesses that would be eligible for the six-month repayment term, and one of those provisions was that businesses had to have less than five locations to be eligible for it, so if they had five or more, they would not be eligible for it. Subsequent to that meeting, I think council members and staff certainly received feedback regarding that limitation and that it potentially was sweeping it within its ambit, businesses that we might consider to be small or medium-sized businesses. And so, after conferring with the mayor, city manager chose to put this matter back on the agenda so the council can have a further discussion on the five, the five-location threshold. And as we've put in the report, and Mr. Landisfame worked extensively on the types of businesses that this might cover, it's recommended that the, that particular provision of the commercial eviction moratorium be amended to be formula businesses as defined in the revision, which have eleven or more locations anywhere in the world. So, it would cover, it would be a larger type of business that would be exempt from the six-month repayment period, would be required to pay, repay their rent in a shorter period of time. So, with that, we have, if there are any questions, certainly, Mr. Landisfame can discuss sort of the impacts that this might have on the, with the five or, with the less than five exemptions. Otherwise, the item is before you for further consideration or adoption.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, Ms. Devine.
Yes. How many requests for a change did we receive? You know, because we, you know, if we change it, I mean, are we changing this because we got one, one request, or two requests, or twenty? How many requests did we get?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Landisfame.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I received two comments on it, and I believe other council members received, I can't speak for the others, but I believe they received...
I have received three comments on this issue, that there are local businesses, and what we have passed is causing hardship for them.
Was that three different ones, Mayor? Three different businesses? Were they different than Mr. Landisfame's?
I don't know. I didn't check.
I heard from Massey's Kebab and De Santis, the old Pizza Pizza.
Yeah. I received from Massey's Zanku and one other, I'm not sure, Stone Oven, I guess.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if I can add, prior to last week's discussion that council had at length in the afternoon regarding this item, Mr. Landisfame and I had discussions with some business owners and had the discussion of the number of sites that they have. And to be honest, as we were going through the discussions last week during the conversation with the city council, and initially, the eleven were mentioned by one of the council members, and forgive me, I don't remember who it was, Mr. Brotman, Councilmember Brotman, and then the conversation ensued, and it was reduced to five or more, I honestly did not remember at that moment to bring up also the eleven and say, you know, just based on the middle, kind of the businesses that are kind of stuck in that middle number, for you to further have that conversation. We should have also brought it up last week, and after the meeting, some of the discussions that we had had prior to that meeting, Mr. Landisfame and I were contacted, and we felt we needed to bring it to your attention for further review.
Mr. Brot.
Since I proposed last week that it be eleven or...
Eleven or more would be...
Eleven or more would be exempt, right?
Right.
Yeah. Up to ten would be included in the protections that we're providing. Yeah, so I support it, and I would...
So, you would...
I would, I would move that we, that we go back to...
Ten?
Well...
Up to ten locations, and no more than a hundred employees in Glendale pre-COVID, right?
Which is already, yeah.
Which is already in there. So, that would still be, that was what I originally proposed, so, I mean, I support that. I would, if we're ready, I would move to adopt that.
But...
Ms. Devine.
You know, how many small businesses do we have in Glendale that have more than five locations? We must have hundreds of them. Do we have a lot of them?
I don't think so.
I mean, we've got three, and we're changing it?
I think it's more the nature of the business, being a very low-margin business, and they don't have the resources, and oftentimes, they will have another location, they'll bring on another location to help spread those costs even further because it is such a low margin, not because they have cash on hand, but because they're trying to spread that cost among more locations. So, it's, it was in that, in that spirit, that they don't have, they're not flush with cash. In the example we gave, it might be two to three million dollars just to operate for another quarter. It's not necessarily a particular business, it's those types of businesses that we wanted to bring to your attention.
I would second Councilmember Brotman's modification.
One second, Mr. Nigerian.
That's fine. And, you know, I love these restaurants, Massey's Kebab, Pizza Pete, Zanku Stone Oven, Portos, they're such a great part of the community. But my problem is, we are, we have set so many different rules, I think it's very confusing to the public, landlords in particular, and to these small business people. I mean, we've, this is maybe our third iteration, is it not, on some sort of relief for tenants, for commercial tenants? And I understand our attempt to make this just the right, the right ordinance, so it's fair to all. It may be fair to none, you know, because we do have a, you know, there is a repayment, even if you fall under the protection, you still have six months, we said, right? We did say six, because, you know, people call me up, and they ask me, what's the rule on this? And I say, wait a minute, let me look it up. You know, are you over eleven? No, no, it's not the eleven, we were at five. So, I just, I'm not going to, I'm not going to oppose the motion and second, but I just think we need to be very careful and not, I'm not saying we're doing the wrong thing, but the way we got there has been confusing. And I'm hearing, I'm hearing from more property owners than I've heard from business owners who are affected by this. And it's, it's kind of a mess. Now, we're going to, what are we going to do? Put a press release out if this is adopted?
We'll put some information on this.
Is this for, is this for introduction, or is this...
It's a resolution changing the public order, so it's going to affect me, so it's going to go, I mean...
And when would it be effective?
As soon as it's adopted. So, and now, we understand, and we viewed this as a tweak, given the feedback that we got, and there had actually been the discussion about doing eleven or more, and it kind of changed at the eleventh hour last week, so...
I mean, we were flying blind. I mean, we thought, oh, you know, five, if you're five or above, you must be a large, successful company with enough reserves to weather this and be able to pay the rent right away, but, you know, we were just guessing. We didn't know the margins of these businesses. We still don't know their true margins, but we're just hearing back from them. So, I'm okay with your motion and the second, but it's just very confusing.
We'll do our best to get information out, the best, so more than just a press release. We will do our best to do the education that's necessary to really help folks on both sides to understand what is being concerned by the city council, if it's adopted.
I mean, our goal, council, I mean, I think I'm speaking for council. We want, we want all the businesses to stay in business, we want all the property owners to meet their mortgage obligations and rent and insurance, and we're hoping that this breathing space of six months will help those smaller or mid-sized businesses, and that the larger ones that don't get that breathing space, we hope that you've, we're assuming you have the financial reserves to make those payments right away at the end of June, right?
Right. Yeah, regardless of the repayment period, the time to actually start paying rent for those that are eligible for the moratorium is July 1st.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, am I going for roll call, or we just...
Unless council had any other comments.
Mayor, we do have two phone calls. Line two is Jordan Davis, line three is Rick Lemo. Line two and three.
Thank you. You are on the air with Mayor and City Councilmembers.
Hi, I'm calling in again this week from the Glendale Tenants Union, and I'm once again calling to encourage the city council to support rent cancellation for all tenants, both commercial, but also residential, due to an inability to pay rent during the COVID emergency period. I'm really dismayed to hear you on this item, hear the council members listening to business owners and commercial tenants' struggles, much more than your sixty percent of commercial tenants, or, I'm sorry, sixty-seven percent of residential tenants who are a part of your constituency, and that the business owners are pushing to reconsider policy only when you hear from them. During the meeting tonight, I'm happy to hear the city council discussing racial inequity on a systemic level during this meeting, as you never before have done while I've been listening in. I saw a Brej at the Black in Glendale rally, and as a community member of Glendale, I appreciate that showing of support. Black in Glendale put on an incredible event that showed Glendale to be a multiracial, multi-ethnic, multi-generational community that aspires to be an anti-racist community. It's great to see this event, and this mass Black Lives Matter movement has encouraged some of the city council members to see how racist policing is connected to poorly-funded schools, lack of affordable housing, health disparity, and wealth inequality in our city. Policing has a racist history, as you know, and so does housing here in our city, just as it is in all American cities, as a previous caller said. just as it is in all American cities, as a previous caller said. Tenants and housing issues are inherently connected with police reforms and making our city affordable and accessible as a place to live for all communities in Glendale, not just white and wealthy communities. Many of you have said that rent cancellation is an extreme idea at past meetings, and I ask you in this moment, is what you think of radical or extreme changing? It's becoming a mass movement to call for the defunding of police departments, a movement that's growing. Aura, in the past week, you have gone from calling the Black in Glendale rally a Trojan horse waiting to cause trouble, to dialing it back and saying it was a nice event while still praising police at this meeting. Your community members are listening to you. As this movement grows to defund and disband racist institutions and policies, the city council members may reconsider never defunding the Glendale PD and investing in healthcare, social services, and housing. The city of LA is already engaging in this conversation, has taken money out of their police department, and I can see Glendale being the next one to do so. Minneapolis has defunded their police department. There are so many other possibilities to keep Glendale a healthy, safe community, including mobile mental health crisis response teams, and funding social workers, nurses, and EMTs, who are not armed to teeth to do the community work police simply are not prepared to do. These are all viable options, and I encourage you to look into and research them.
Thank you.
I again ask you to reconsider your position on rent cancellation. Anything besides canceling rent would equate to a massive rent increase that would effectively cause large-scale eviction. Anything besides rent cancellation is effectively an economically racist policy. And I think that's something many of you know, thinking about which tenants you're essentially setting up to be evicted from their homes, or would be saddled with massive debt. You have acknowledged being unaware of race-related issues in your city council work, and of not doing enough.
Thank you very much.
You are now wondering what you can further do. I fully support your reaching out to Black Lives groups in Glendale, as has been suggested by callers tonight.
All right.
There are individuals and groups who have been thinking about these topics-
Thank you very much. I have to cut you off. I'm sorry. Thank you. You were on the air for three minutes. You spoke for almost five minutes. Thank you. You are on the air?
Hello?
Yes, hi. You are on the air.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and council.
No, no, it's Mayor Agajanian.
Mayor Agajanian and council.
Aye, Lemo.
I'm, I'm only hoping that you're going to allow me, if necessary, to have five minutes, the way every caller has had, within the last four council meetings I've been on the phone. My name is Rick Lemo, and I'm calling only on behalf of the Greater Downtown Glendale Association. And tonight, I'm going to ask you to do just two things, because I was kind of shocked the way a motion was made and seconded before we ever heard from the public. Here's what I'm going to ask you to do. I want you to consider exactly what Councilmember Najarian had mentioned. To say that the city of Glendale is confusing is an understatement. This is going to be the fourth time that we have changed on property owners. I would like you to consider some very important points. Number one, even though the intent is gracious to forgive rents, zero consideration is made to property owners, whether they're large or small makes no difference, to property owners that have to make mortgage payments. There has not been one consideration of those individuals. But now, the most important part, and this is what is so shocking, if any business whatsoever, any business, I don't care whether it's a doctor, a podiatrist, a restaurant, if any business has five locations, how can anyone, anyone whatsoever, consider that a small business? It's not. Okay? And those people are the same people who have received massive COVID assistance, and now they don't want to pay rent. They've been able, some of them even been able to operate during the lockdown and the pandemic. So I'd like you to consider, when someone has five locations or more, how can they realistically be considered a small business? And by the way, stop and think about the calls you've gotten. You've received in the last three weeks, over 125 letters from people supporting the property owners and asking you that enough is enough. Number one, we talked about, how can anybody, how can anybody with 100 pre-COVID employees, including their businesses outside of Glendale, be considered a small business? What really should be done tonight is no change. The rules stay in effect. Why do we want to cut someone down, like a property owner, when we're finally starting to get business geared back up? And keep in mind, you're property owners in the downtown Glendale district. By the time we're done, and what we're doing as far as giving the city services and funds, we will have given almost $70,000 to the recovery in Glendale. And who will that help first? Before it helps anybody else, it helps only the tenants. It doesn't help the property owners. It won't help the property owners for 90 days after it helps the tenants. So what I'm asking you to do tonight, please, is look at this with a common sense eye. Number one, please don't make any more changes, because one, two, or four people call their favorite council member and say something's not right. It doesn't affect them. Number two, stop and think from a common sense standpoint. Can anyone with five or more locations be considered small? Number three, can anybody with 100 or more pre-COVID employees be considered small? And please stick to your guns on what has taken place already, and please stop with the changes, and pay attention to the property owners who have been virtually ignored by our city of Glendale. And I thank you so much for the time and your consideration, and certainly for your service.
Thank you very much. I have another caller, yes. You are on the air with city council members, mayor and staff. Is this a real number?
Mayor, I think that's for the item that we skipped, 80. That's Alan Melikin.
Okay. So they can wait until we call them again. So, all right, now we have-
Just for the record-
I made a motion, there was a second.
And just for the record, the motion and the second occurring before public comment is not inappropriate. The motion just sets the, the item on the table for debate.
For you.
It's still on the table for debate? Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is it still on the table?
Yes, please. Ms. Devine.
Yeah. You know, I think to make this change for two calls or three calls, and we have a lot of, a lot of, um, uh, commercial owners that have not complained, I think, you know, you have to look at, a lot of these that have five locations, they own their locations, they, they, they don't owe anybody except maybe, you know, themselves, and they're making money. They're, and as Rick Lemo said, a lot of them are, have been making money throughout this pandemic. So I, I just think to do this, to make this change for three, three callers, or two ca, two complaints, is a little bit, I don't know, I wanted, I don't want to use the word, so, I just think it's uncalled for. You know, I, I don't know that, that Portos would have a problem paying their, their rent. You know, five businesses is a lot. And I, I totally agree. So I, I can't support going up to 11.
Thank you very much. So we have the, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I made the motion.
You have the second?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
No.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
I wasn't going to oppose it, but I'm going to abstain.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next item would be 8E City Attorney regarding denial and findings, 340 North Central Avenue, Stage 1 and 2 Design Review Case Number PDR 19208551. Motion denying combined Stage 1 and 2 Design. Two motion directing staff to notice a reopened hearing. Three motion approving Stage 1 Design only. Four motion approving combined Stage 1 and 2 Design.
Mayor, members of council, this item is continued from last week. The council held a hearing on May 12th on this project at 340 North Central on the Stage 1 and Stage 2 Design Review. And actually, before I continue, I don't know if-
Oh.
Mr. Kusakian.
Yes. Per our campaign contribution rules and guidelines, and because of them, I've recused myself from the two previous discussions, and I will recuse myself from the discussion now unless told otherwise by our city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with respect to the, the item, Mr. Mayor, the council gave us direction on May 12th, after the public hearing, to prepare findings in support of denying the Stage 1 and Stage 2 Design. Those findings were brought before you last week for consideration. At that time, there was a split among the council, whether or not to approve the, the motion denying the project, or to reopen the public hearing to take additional evidence. So before, today, under our charter, when there's a 2-2 tie, that matter is required to come back on each successive agenda until the council either changes its mind and votes one way or the other to support or approve, approve the item, or takes the matter off the, off the calendar. At this point, the, the options before you are to, as last week, to approve the Stage 1 and to design, to notice, renotice, direct staff to renotice a new public hearing or supplemental public hearing, to hear additional evidence, to approve only Stage 1. Stage 1 is the sort of conceptual design of the project, you're not approving the final design. And that would require, Stage 1 approval does not require CECL to be approved at this time, that could come back with Stage 2. And then you also have the option to approve the, the Stage 1 and Stage 2 Design, which was the item that was before you on May 12th. I would note that you, I think you have a speaker, maybe more. You obviously can take that speaker. You have to, you have to hear Mr. Melikin's comments, as required by the Brown Act, but that, that is not evidence that you'd be considering. It's just him speaking on the matter, speaking on the findings, and obviously, I'm sure he's gonna have, you know, a request, one way or the other, on, on this project. But any sort of documentary evidence or additional evidence from experts is not something that you can take into consideration, deliberating whether or not to approve the project, deny the project, or, or take further action. So with that, I'll submit to any questions the mayor and council has, and, and-
I go to the caller first.
Go to Mr. Melikin. Yes, sir.
You are on the air with mayor and city council members and the staff.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and council members. Thank you for letting me speak on this action item. I understand that you have four items in front of you. Obviously, our preference would be motion number four, which would be approving the combination of Stage 1 and 2. But if that, that motion is not reached, we would, we would request or ask the council to consider number two, to direct the staff to notice, renotice, and reopen, reopen the hearing. I presented all, all our cases last time. I believe that all the conditions have been met, but I do still understand Mr. Najarian and Brockman have issues with the design, and, and so there's nothing I can say or, or explain that will suffice those issues, other than for me to go back and, and discuss with our clients and see if there's any ways that we can address. Having said that, we have already, our, our team, or my client, has reached, spoken with the owner of the property again, and they are in full compliance and agreeance with our project, as well as, again, they have been, we have been in contact with, with the tenants, which is the Armenian Embassy, and we are, we will be working with them for certain questions and conditions that they have, they wanted to discuss with us, such as security and other issues. But having said that, I'm available if there's anything that I can add or help make the decision easier for you guys to make. I'm available. So, thank you.
I'm sorry. First, I want to read from this. Okay. Thank you. On page two, on the report, on page two of the report, it says on June 2, 2020. The council considered the proposed findings. The finding was being what?
Findings were, apologize. The findings were findings in support of denying the Stage 1 and Stage 2.
Deny.
Deny, so denying the project.
All right. That's what I, first I wanted to, all right, now. I'm suggesting we accept this as a Stage 1 only. And then they have to work again and bring the project to the, to the, our staff, and then later to us, if there is any agreement to it, I don't know. They just accept as Stage 1, as it has been mentioned here, number three on the alternatives.
So my question to that is, the Stage 1 is what's already been submitted. They can't submit a new Stage 1 at this point. That's a new submission.
They've submitted for both. They submitted Stage 1 and Stage 2 at the same time.
So, so Stage 1 as submitted is not good for me, even though it's just a Stage 1. I would be happy to look at a new concept, which would be a new Stage 1. But I'm not ready to go back to the Stage 1 that was already in our, in our books, for the reasons that we, that we discussed.
Let's, Mr. Brot, or Mr. Brotman, or if anybody can, let me, I'm sorry, not Mr. Brotman, Mr. Our attorney-
I'll be happy to go with that.
No, no, one second. Our city attorney or staff can explain what we are accepting as a step, as a Stage 1. In this city, what's Stage 1? So make it clear now, because Stage 1, as far as I understand, what, what I was doing as an engineer, Stage 1 was the idea that how big the entire building it's gonna be, approximately what it will look like, is not the final stage of anything.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and certainly Mr. Landesfame can chime in. Stage 1 is generally the building, you know, the building mass and scale, the size of the project. It's not getting into the details of what building materials you have, or, and the other thing I would add is that with the Stage 1, the council, if the council was inclined to do a Stage 1 approval, the council can say it's a Stage 1 approval, subject to conditions. So if the council had the concern about the, you know, setback next to the Armenian Consular Building, they could propose that a condition be that, you know, the designer worked towards creating a bigger setback, just as an example. I'm not suggesting that, but that's, that was one of the concerns that were raised. So there's some flexibility there to approve the Stage 1 with conditions, to address the concerns that were raised in the, in the May 12th hearing, and, and last week, too. The size of the third floor, or the, the location of the third floor setback, whatever issues the council had concerns with, those can also be made. But again, that's, that's, that's the council's decision on, on whether to approve that and impose conditions.
Stage 1, what I'm understanding from Stage 1 is how many square footage the building gonna be? How many square footage it's gonna be?
Mr. Mayor, one of several things in Stage 1.
Yeah.
Mass, scale, site.
No, I was not finished. I was going to say, but you, you, you continue, doesn't matter. I was going to say what I understand from Stage 1, not just one item, but however. You go ahead with what you understand.
Generally, and we'll use the Indigo as an example, Mr. Brotman, excuse me, you, you weren't here for that deliberation, but we were looking at site planning, mass and scale. By site planning, and the council said in looking at that, yeah, everything looks right. I, I like how much it's, it's away from the residential. I like how it's set back from the street on, on Central and Doran. I understand that it's got to go right up next to the building on the other side, but that's okay. Looked at all that, and you said yes, and then they went and they refined their design. If you were, so you were looking at site planning. The site plan that was delivered to you shows a building right up to- The site plan that was delivered to you shows a building right up to that north property line, and that's where you had some concern. So as Mr. Garcia said, if you would wanted to approve a Stage 1, you should give conditions on how you would like to see that mass, scale, and site planning revised, and, and that would be your approval of Stage 1. To approve Stage 1 of what was submitted to you would be saying the mass and scale of the building is okay, the site planning is okay, it's okay up to that northern property line, which is where this council had some issue.
Okay. What I understand from Scale 1 is how much, I mean, square footage of the building going to be? How many levels, how many stories it's going to be? It will be glass, concrete, I don't know, brick? I mean, that's basic ideas from Stage 1. They're giving you a state of how many floors it's going to be there. It doesn't even say how the maximum height going to be. I mean, general idea it gives. I mean, it doesn't get involved with minor or specific issues related to that building.
It, it does, it does call out height because you're, you're giving the envelope.
Yeah.
And it calls out all of those things you said in addition to site planning. Again, that building, where is it located? And they proposed a location that's right up to that northern property line. If you approve Stage 1 based on the, the submission they gave you, you're saying the location of that building is fine. Again, and, and we're not trying to say what you should do or shouldn't do. That's, you're, up to you. If you want to do Stage 1, though, we recommend that you do it with conditions on how you would like to see that site planning, the location of that building, the mass and scale change.
Now, Mr. Brodmann, you want to say something?
Well, I guess I'm kind of thinking, you know, what's the point of approving the Stage 1? If they're going to have to come back with a, with a new design, um, let's just accept the findings and then have them come back with a new design, and then we'll approve a Stage 1. I, I don't, I don't understand the concept of approving a Stage 1 if we know we have problems with the sighting, and if we have problems with the way it's positioned in the lot. What are we doing? I mean, just have them go back and come up with a new design.
Okay.
That's what I, that's, that's my...
Ms. Devine?
Yes. Thank you very much. Well, I, I, I want to say that I looked at the video of the meetings that we've had previously, have read the staff reports 100 times, and I am going to vote to deny the project. Because I agree, and I was going to say exactly what Mr. Brodmann said, with all the changes that Mr. Melikian has heard, he can bring this back with a redesign, with all of the considerations that we're talking about, the, but of course, before I can approve anything, I'm going to have to have that, that Sequo analysis, the historic engineering analysis, and the, of course, we'll look at the tandem parking, but I will change my, my vote to deny the project.
Okay. So then if that's the case, we can vote on this item?
No further discussion or deliberations.
I'll move item, whatever.
8E.
8E1.
8E.
8E1, motion denying combined Stage 1 Design.
Correct. I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann? Yes. Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
I guess I have no choice, so I go along with my call.
Always have a choice.
That's how we got in trouble in the first place. May 12.
What's next, please? What's next, please, Mr. Agajanian?
Next would be oral communication. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. There are two calls, mayor.
Okay. I go to the first caller. You are, you are on the air with mayor, city council members, and the staff.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. I'm calling to voice concerns from my fellow renters in the city. I, I just want to take a second to think about...
We are listening. Hello?
And when this all started, you guys dragged your feet to address the effect of COVID-19 on renters. Then when the county passed something, you adopted it because you had to. And then last month, you decided to undercut it and set up an unfair and dangerous repayment system for no apparent reason, other than what? I mean, the money that the California Apartment Association and their slum lords are holding over your heads? Because a little FYI is that the landlords of Glendale have been breaking the law left and right during this entire pandemic, and the police force that you guys don't want to have an ounce of criticality towards hasn't done anything about it. And don't tune out because you don't like what I have to say right now because I'm not done talking. The landlords in Glendale are conducting illegal lockouts, they're fabricating illegal repayment contracts, they're refusing to address health-threatening issues like black mold, and on top of it, they're harassing their tenants about all the back rent that they're going to try to make them pay and pull out of thin air before the state of emergency is even over. I don't know where Arti went. I don't see him on the screen, but a couple of meetings ago, you know, someone from the tenants' union mentioned, speaking with a 40-year tenant who was on the edge of being homeless, and Arti had the audacity to act surprised and encourage us to reach to the city for help. I mean, we've been warning you about this every single meeting and explicitly asking you for help, and the closer that we get to our governor lifting the state of emergency, the closer we get to a looming landslide of evictions, displacement, homelessness. I also just want to point out that COVID-19 isn't over. We're going to have a second wave of it during the coming fall, winter, when flu season kicks in. The peak is going to be higher this time, and there's going to be more dying, and this housing problem will not only persist, but it's going to intensify. You cannot keep hiding from this, and it's just so infuriating. Paula Devine, R. Najarian, Reg Agajanian, Dan Brodmann, and Arti Kasakian, you are going to have massive amounts of blood on your hands, and the worst part is that you could have done something to prevent it. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. You are on the air with city council, mayor, and staff. Hello?
Hello.
Yes. You're on the air.
Yes. Hi, my name is Shahin Abadjan. I just wanted to call in and say on behalf of the silent majority of the Glendale residents that we are 110% opposed to defunding the police. While we support peaceful protests, none of us support defunding the police department, especially not for a crime committed in some other state that has nothing to do with them. Okay? And, and I can go on and on, but I'm not going to do that. I just want to, before I get off the line, I want to say to the people sitting there in that room pretending like they're okay with defunding our police, shame on you for disrespecting those men and women that put their life on the line every day to keep your children and family safe. And, and just so you all know, we, we will never let the police department get defunded, okay? Thank you, and have a good night.
Good. Thank you. Okay. There is no other calls, am I right?
Correct. No other calls.
So what's next?
New business?
No new business.
Adjournment.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
In the memory of Bob...
In memory of Bob...
One second.
We will adjourn in memory of Bob Guest, please.
I joined to that memory with that said, meeting adjourned at 9:57 PM. Thank you. Is there anything?